Welcome to the September 5th regular city council meeting, City of Nacogdoches. Chad, will you lead us in prayer, please?
I will. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day grateful for all of your many blessings to us. Lord, I thank you for this great city of Nacogdoches, Texas. Lord, I thank you for all the interested residents that are here. I thank you for our city council, our city staff. Lord, I ask that you be in our midst tonight, that we might show your grace, Lord, that we might have your knowledge to do things in a way that would be pleasing to you, Lord. In Christ's name, amen.
If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll go to open forum next. We have one open forum, and it is Mr. Mike Molling, please. And if you'll limit your comments to three minutes, Mr. Molling, please.
Mike Molling, forty-five twenty-six East Main Street in Nacogdoches. And I want to congratulate you guys on your job search for the manager. We can put Kipilin her back in the fire department where we want him. And that's always exciting. So, you know, when I got on the Parks and Rec Board, I told every one of y'all that I'm about being accountable to the taxpayers, and so that's why I'm here tonight. There's a bunch of assessments that need to be done. As far as I'm concerned with the parks, there's a lot of maintenance and a lot of stuff that has been kind of deferred. And so, in my opinion, I think we need to do an assessment of all the areas in our government. Now that we have a new city manager, it's the perfect time to do that, and see where we stand before we start doing all these new projects. Because when I came on board, I was very clear about not wanting to vote for any new projects until we see where we're sitting with the stuff that we have. And I've been to a lot of the parks, and I've seen a lot of stuff that needs fixing. And, you know, no knock on the guys that are working doing the parks, but it's just stuff that needs to be taken care of. And in addition, in our last meeting, there was a number of one million dollars' worth of storm damage from the flood done to stuff in Nacogdoches that has to come out of somebody's pocket, and it's uninsured. So, you know, I would love for y'all to consider, you know, doing a full-blown look into all of our different areas that we have funding and obligations. And so, on that, the other things that I have is, I did speak with Randy today briefly about these bathrooms back here below in the park. They've been vandalized, they're left open at night. And so, I'm asking if we can maybe do something about getting locks, or getting the doors locked, there's locks on them, getting them locked at ten o'clock when the park closes. But there's the soap dispensers have been tore off the walls, there's graffiti on the walls with paint, there's trash everywhere, and it appears that there's people been sleeping in there. And so, I think that's a big concern, a big liability for the city. And I think I only have one more thing, and that is, the lights, I just happened to notice this morning, I was driving around early, and the lights at the pickleball courts at Maroni Park were on all night. And there's a lot of lights out there, and that's a lot of money. And, you know, all these little things add up. But, you know, to be a good steward of our money, we need to check all areas of our finances and address those things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, very much. Thank you. Okay, next item, we'll go to the consent agenda, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, next item, we'll go to the regular agenda. And item A has been withdrawn, so we'll go to item B. Public hearing to consider a specific use permit to operate a tattoo salon slash piercing studio in a B-two general business district on Lot 6B, City Block 6, located at 507 East Main Street. This request had been submitted by Krista Robertson, case number SUP two oh three dash oh five. Mr. Bartlett.
Evening, Mayor Council, Steve Bartlett, and I'm acting as your interim city planner tonight. So be patient with me. Again, this item is for a specific use permit for a tattoo salon and piercing studio at 507 East Main Street. This is located adjacent, or at the old main theater, so you can see highlighted on this exhibit. This property is zoned, currently Zone B-two general business, which requires a specific use permit to operate a tattoo salon and a piercing studio in this particular district. The SUP is really an extra layer of approval that allows the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, the opportunity to impose additional conditions, if necessary, on such developments. This request does not change the underlying zoning, so it remains B-two. Literally, if approved, the applicant leaves this location, whenever the applicant leaves this location for any reason, the SUP is null and void. So this is specific only to this one business. So the conditions that have been proposed for this SUP were only 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. hours of operation, Tuesday through Saturday, be closed, of course, on Sunday and Monday. Tattoos would be only by appointment. They would preserve the exterior facade of the theater, and yes, it is in historic overlay, so there would be preservations there regardless. Very minimal signage, and we'll talk about that a little more. And the existing display cabinets will showcase community events, and that's the old billboard stuff up top. So here's a good example, a rendering that they have done of kind of what they want to do to the front doors and windows, as well as those areas where they can publish and show things like Blueberry Festival, as well as their business. So here's some general site photos from Main Street, the side of the building where there is parking places. And this is the interior leased space. This is the old lobby of the main theater. This is a building that also has residential structures inside, residential apartments inside as well as a separate unit, but this is the main lobby. There's another picture of it. So in order for this to be approved, there are eight conditions that must be met that you must evaluate, and I won't read the details of all of them, but in general, we think it meets most of these conditions. The one in question is compatibility. The applicant's in agreement of the importance of preserving the look of the theater, as we previously stated, and has the proposed additional conditions to help alleviate any concerns this business would have in the downtown area. This slide shows the 200-foot notification map. Within that area, staff sent out 15 notices to those property owners and have received one written response in support and four in opposition of the request. And that has changed. Since then, we've received an additional opposition request. The four opposing responses, and now five, comprise more than 20% of the adjacent land area, forming a favorable vote by, requiring a favorable vote by three-fourths of the city council or four members. This is the supermajority rule. So, and again, this is not based on the number of comments, it's based on the land area of the commenters compared to the total. So it's something we kind of have to keep up in this spreadsheet and look up acreages. It's a little task, but we have exceeded that 20%, which will require you to have four votes to pass anything tonight. And there's just a saber. So we did have a lot of community responses as well, 109, and there've been a few more trickle-ins since this, since we had to publish this. We had 35 opposed and 74 in favor at that point in time. On August the 14th, the Planning Commission voted 3-2 to approve the request as it was presented. City council's actions are to approve it, to approve it with special conditions, or to deny the SUP. So that concludes our part of, and I'll be happy to answer questions, and the applicant, I think, is here, and certainly folks to speak. So we'll be happy to answer questions after public comment.
All right, we'll start with public comment. I know there's a lot of people here that want to talk tonight, but if you can limit your comments to not the same thing over and over and over again, just make it, or we'll be here all night, everybody wants to talk, so I think that's fair. So we can start wherever anybody wants to start.
Do you want to do a presentation first?
Sure.
Okay. Can this hold on in three minutes?
Oh, that's okay. Come.
Sorry, that's how we did it last time, so I just wanted to double-check. I think that I had a presentation for slides as well, but I'm not sure. Did you load it onto the laptop?
I sent it all to Amy and Juan.
Do you have that too?
It would be unfor planning its own, probably the one you had at PNC.
Yeah, just put some extra stuff on it. Okay, well, I can just go ahead and do my speech, if that's okay.
I will, why don't you get it?
Okay. I just have pictures to go along with it.
It's up to you. I don't want to.
If I need to send it to another, you know, I can have that be here.
I don't know if I can.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's just get back real quick.
That's the old one? I mean, I'm sure I could maybe use at least some stuff from it.
Did you send in new ones?
Yes. To Juan and Amy.
One. One in. Okay. One had to leave with a family emergency, so that may have.
That's okay.
Do you want to try the, you want to try the old one?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it's got some stuff on it that I can use, for sure. That's okay, sure. I'll make it work. Awesome, thank you. All right. Please bear with me, no matter how many times I've done this, I still can't use the public speaking, it makes me super nervous, but I'm getting better at it. So my name's Krista Robertson, I'm the owner of Golden Cicada Tattoo. I have always lived in East Texas. I grew up in the Hudson-Lufkin area, then started gravitating towards Nacogdoches in my high school years. I found myself very drawn to the music scene, the artists, and the diversity that the college brings. Honestly, I just found myself here more and more, and then I was fortunate enough to start my tattoo career at Casey's Tattoo in 2010, and I have lived here and been tattooing here ever since. I am a new business owner, but I'm not new to this town. I care a lot about being active in the community, and I love it here very much. I'm not a stranger coming in from out of nowhere, trying to do anything radical. I've already been here, I've put down roots here, and I've made strong connections here. I'm simply a successful artist and business owner, it's just trying to expand. Our goal at our studio has been to maintain a clean, professional, and sterile environment with an aesthetic that is more in line with art studios, salons, and boutiques, but we also want to show others that we're passionate about art, and we want to educate people on proper, safe tattoo and piercing practices. I actually personally worked with SFA students in the past to attend seminars designed to educate about tattoo and piercing safety, and what to look for and what to stay away from, and I plan to continue that collaboration. Speaking on safety, I believe there was some brief concern or mention about autoclaves and certain equipment that we use being dangerous. I can assure you that it's not a concern. We work very closely with the Texas State Health Department and have to maintain a certain standard of cleanliness and rules to stay open and operational. This includes monitoring the equipment and supplies we use. If we don't follow these regulations, we get fined and shut down, and of course, we don't want that. Our hours are Tuesday through Saturday, as you said before, 1:00 to 7:00, and close on Sunday and Monday. Since working and living here, I have met a lot of talented and amazing people, which has also led me to curating an amazing clientele. My clients keep me booked out for three months in advance, and due to this, I'm only able to operate as appointment-only. We will continue to be appointment-only for tattoo artists, to allow both the client and the artist to work on their designs and make a well-planned decision together. For piercings, however, we do encourage calling ahead and making appointments as much as possible, but we will be more open to walk-ins on the weekend. Having these very reasonable hours, I wouldn't be opposed to bringing in people for potential shopping as well. I've found that there's a lot of people that love the artistic element of tattoos, but have a hard time committing to the permanence of them. We are hoping and planning to sell artwork and merchandise to cater to those clients also. Because of this, it's very important to us that we have a space that is comfortable for all ages and all types of people. Someone might just come in to buy some art or buy jewelry, some clients might bring their kids in. I do have that happen quite often, where they will sit there while their, you know, parents are getting a tattoo, they sit and they color, or they play on their tablets, or sometimes I'll have some older women in their 70s that, you know, they don't want to be scared off by metal music or something. You know, it's, we have to read the room, we have to be accommodating, and whatever the scenario, it would not be beneficial for us to have an environment that was inappropriate or uncomfortable to anyone. We put a lot of effort and thought into how we present ourselves, and we want to be accommodating to everyone. With that being said, the property is zoned general business, and it will continue to operate this way. My business is just the same, it just simply requires a special use permit. I conduct my business as a general business, and I do not allow drinking, drugs, loitering, or solicitation. Here are some pictures of our current studio. We're operating in the same suite, or the same suite within the same building as Special Effects Salon. It's owned by Autumn Anthony, another very successful woman who also cares about maintaining a professional environment. She was not able to make it to this meeting, unfortunately, but she did speak at the last PNC meeting and has vouched for me and my studio. I was welcomed to the salon and easily proved that our aesthetic fit perfectly alongside them. Not only could we work alongside them in harmony, but we actually share a lot of clientele. We absolutely loved being able to work over there with them, but due to expanding, we have outgrown the space. I want to mention that being a part of their salon, I had zero complaints from, not only the salon and their clients, but also I had no complaints from the small neighborhood of residential homes right across the street. This is a small cul-de-sac of about four or five houses that are mostly occupied by elderly ladies. I already experienced the same zoning process with them and was also met with the same concerns, and I helped them to understand and showed them all of the same things I'm presenting here, and they understood and gave me a chance. I've been there for almost a year now, and I've proved that I could operate nearby without any problems. As you saw before, that brings us to now, where we are trying to rent out the main theater storefront at 507 East Main. We want to assure everyone that we would not want to take away from the historical charm or the downtown of this, you know, downtown, or charm of this building downtown. So we provided the mock-ups, you know, minimal sign changes for the poster windows. We do want to try to put, you know, events and things like art walks or whatever would be happening downtown. On the subject of outside appeal, I want to discuss a reoccurring topic that has been brought up at all of the meetings so far, and that is the topic of supposed property values decreasing because of my business. I've done as much research as I possibly can, and I talked to many local realtors and was met with the same answer, that my business simply renting a small space should not affect this. I also went to the central appraisal district, and they were able to provide me with helpful information. One of those things being that most appraisals are based on more of what you do to renovate your own property itself, and that things such as the home's condition, age, location, and property size carry more weight than anything. However, that's not to say that the surroundings aren't important in determining value, but it is shown that strong commercial developments do add value and improve property values, whereas a neglected building or a vacant storefront will negatively affect the properties nearby. Having a building being used with a dependable tenant makes more sense than it sitting empty and lifeless. I also want to assure that when it comes to the desirability of buying a home, they wouldn't look across the street and go, oh, God, a tattoo shop. You know, they would look across the street and still see an old historic theater. The signage for our place, like I said, will be very minimal. The only thing that's going to say tattoo and piercing is very small print on the actual door, and you would not be able to see that from across the street. If approved, we also would be working to restore the floors and fix the outside marquee and lighting that are falling apart and in desperate need of repair, and that would also improve the overall curb appeal. I feel like all these things would contribute positively to the property values and the desirability of buying property nearby. I also provided clientele demographics from over 100 of my clients. Over half of those clients are women, majority are in their 30s, 33% hold bachelor's degrees, 12% master's degrees, and some of the most popular occupations listed were marketing managers, healthcare workers, teachers, professors, first responders, and stay-at-home moms. If you wanted to keep looking at it, just let me know, I won't change it until you're ready. I also was able to provide a map from the same survey that shows all the different areas of Texas that my clientele drive from to acquire my services. We never meant for this, or imagined this, would gain so much attention. We simply found a rental space that we loved, that worked for us, and applied for the permit. But it's overwhelmingly grown so much bigger than us, it has gone beyond us getting a special use permit, and become more about the community coming together to back us and support us because they want to see change, and we want to see this happen. We were able to meet and get signatures from almost 250 people for a support petition. I have all of those here. Among those people are a mix of local citizens, well-known, successful business owners, and also property owners and renters in the area. We ran out of time on submitting the updated PowerPoint slide, but it's not the same one anyways, but I do have a list that's more updated than that one here as well. If any of you would like to see it, I can definitely let you look at it. But the, another thing that we, or some of the businesses that we were actually able to add on to that list were Susu's Popcorn, The Boss Light Bookstore, Blue Eyed Cocos, The Cottage, and Milford's Barbershop, just to name a few. I also want to say that we specifically have more support from property owners within the 200 feet range. They just didn't have time to drop everything that they're doing, to worry about this stuff and send anything in. We expressed that we would love, if they could, send in those forms, but they are busy people and have, I would assume, better things to worry about. Some of them aren't usually here in town often, so I felt like a no vote, to me, signifies being unbothered by the situation, and I think that's worth mentioning. Our goal in starting these signatures was actually to meet people in person and go the extra mile to make the connections, and show that the voices of small business owners, renters, and average citizens in this town are just as important as property owners. I listened to those who were still concerned at the last meeting, saying, I don't have a problem with tattoos, I have friends and family with tattoos, and then proceeded to say, but, I just don't think this is an appropriate business. But I find that statement confusing, given what all have presented so far, and would urge them to answer specifically why. My assumption is, based on my last zoning experience, is that it's because there are some that think that my business is going to bring a clientele that's not favorable, but that's just simply not based in facts, it's based in fear of the unknown and past stereotypes. You would not be able to tell the difference between my clients, or my clientele that walks into my door versus a person that walks into the apartments within that same building, or maybe even the Goodwill next door. You wouldn't see anything other than average people coming in and out of a door, just like the rest of downtown. We honestly have so much heart and excitement behind this, and put a lot of thought and fun ideas into our potential future planning in general. We actually made example business cards. I was going to just put them on the thing, but I have them here if you want to look at them. We had these made, just to kind of show that, you know, we're having fun with this. But yeah, they're business cards made to look like movie tickets. And we've also spoken to Susu's Popcorn about collaborating and showcasing their popular popcorns at the theater as well, and she was definitely on board with that. We also want to work with multiple other businesses, possibly using the ticket booth as a highlight for some of everyone's favorite places downtown. We would really love to not only think of this place as, you know, just ours, we want to think of it as a hub for artists, small business owners, and locals to showcase their talents and passions. We just want to make something fun and inviting for everyone. If people are still unsure about our business, I do understand, but if you don't understand the tattoo procedure, or what health codes are, or anything about what we do, then we are the ones to ask. I've been involved in this world getting tattoos since I was 18. I've been working in it for 13 years. I'm a professional, and I know what I'm talking about, and I'm happy to help others understand it better. I'd also be happy to exchange numbers with any person or business nearby if they're still unsure going forward. I want to go above and beyond to educate everyone about how much this industry has changed and what it has to offer, because most of all, I care a lot about making connections and being a good neighbor, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to, anyone have any comments from the audience? Yea or nay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm actually going to take my time to read a statement of a gentleman who wasn't able to come here today. So, my name is Alex Rantz, and I am local. I work at Fredonia Brewery, and I also am on many local city boards as well. Anyway, so this is a letter of support from Jeffrey Murray, also known as Jay Soul. City Council and City Manager, my name is Jeffrey Murray, professionally known as Jay Soul, or Jay. This letter is to voice my support for Krista, as well as others who share the same commitment to advancing entrepreneurship and small businesses in downtown Nacogdoches. Reflecting on the planning and zoning meeting that led us to this moment, I felt an urge to speak my mind. At said meeting, I noted a common thread in the arguments against Krista's business venture in the downtown area, a focus on self-interest. Concerns were raised about property values, personal investments, future home sales, and the welfare of children. There were frequent mention of perceived negative element being attracted to this business, though I remain uncertain about what type of people this element refers to, and I invite those present today to provide clarity on this matter. It is worth noting that many houses on the same block as the proposed new location date back to the 1800s, including this historically significant Stern Hoya House, which I have employed at for the nearly five months. Some of these structures have witnessed the passage of time, including the era of slavery, when some of them were built with the labor of enslaved individuals. Yet, society has evolved since then, so why should those types of businesses near the houses not evolve as well? At the last meeting, someone mentioned the comparison of our downtown to a typical American Main Street, a viewpoint I respectfully disagree with. Having explored various downtowns across East Texas and the nation, I find our own in greater need of rejuvenation. A recurring challenge arises when new businesses attempt to establish themselves and are met with resistance from the community. Sadly, critics rarely provide alternatives for filling vacant spaces within these buildings. In the words of Paul Murray, who's here tonight, "From the prior meeting, an empty business space contributes more negatively than a thriving one. Furthermore, it is perplexing to consider what kind of undesirable element could be attracted to a business that closes its doors at 7:00 p.m. daily." As a native to Nacogdoches, a sentiment shared by many present, I believe that our voices shaped by a deep connection to this community hold more weight than those who have only received, arrived, recently arrived seeking our town's charm and low crime rate. As a small business owner myself, I stand in solidarity with fellow entrepreneurs, recognizing the relentless dedication required to chase dreams and be one's own boss. However, for our downtown to flourish and attract visitors, we must open our minds to diverse businesses, business ventures in our historic district. Let's face the facts. How many gift shops? How many gift shops, antique stores, law offices, clothing boutiques can one downtown sustain? To revitalize our downtown, we must embrace varied enterprises instead of shunning them, all while offering constructive solutions for vacant deteriorating storefronts and businesses. The residents seem to be all about people spending money in our downtown, but only at businesses that they agree with. In November 2022, during my involvement in the Dia de los Muertos Festival, a shop owner on the square inquired about the event's purpose. Upon explaining its cultural significance, the individual remarked that such an event will attract a negative element that is not welcome. Hold on. Come on, there we go. Downtown. This notion echoed in the recent planning and zoning meeting, again begs clarification as to who these individuals are. If there are false preconceived notions as to white type of people get tattoos, then the family members mentioned by some of you that have tattoos fall into that category as well. If the people that live in and around downtown are adamant about remaining in the 1800s, they should just say that. There is no need to disguise it with opinions unbacked by evidence, absence of research, and an apparent disregard for certain demographics they anticipate. Moreover, it is important to recognize that the presumed negative element does not patronize as, or, yeah, does not go to establishments for tattoos and piercings because it is doubtful that they can actually afford Krista's services. In conclusion, I would like to share the words of a close friend. To quote, "The belief that local governments can act without accountability to their constituents is what enables them to do as they please. The power comes from individual citizens exercising their First Amendment right, expressing valid opinions as taxpayers on matters affecting their community, a community that extends beyond one's immediate family or residence. Let the majority of a community's opinion be heard, and let our voices always be heard. May God bless all of you and my great city of Nacogdoches." And I live at 3432 Counter Berry Street, Nacogdoches 75965.
My name is Dr. Victoria Wagner-Green. I transplanted here from Ohio in 2019 to be a professor at SFA. One of the main reasons that I came here was the feeling of community and the historic downtown and how beautiful it was. I wanted to take this moment, sorry, allergies are really bad down here, take this moment to share some other historic downtowns that have welcomed tattoo shops across East Texas. At 110 South Main Street in Gladwater, Texas, the antique capital of Texas, there is Hilli's Tattoo Shop. At 115 North Main Street in Jasper, Texas, Opal Ink Tattoo. At 315 West Main Street in Palestine, Texas, Bloodlines Tattoo. At 214 West Alamo Street in Brenham, Texas, Identifying Marks Tattoo Shop. And at 307 West 26th Street in Bryan, Texas, we have Arsenial Tattoo. So, there are other downtowns, especially historic downtowns across East Texas, that have embraced this opportunity to expand to an artistic and creative new business. And I think that this goes to show that our historic downtown could be next on the list. Thank you for your time.
I'm kind of like Krista, I'm kind of nervous about talking, so bear with me. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ricky Taylor. I actually live in Livingston, Texas, at 941 West Calhoun Street. I've been involved in EMS air for 47 years. I currently do marketing for the company I work for. I'm very involved in my community. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, I'm a board member for Children's Havens. I'm actually 69 years old, and I'm almost fully covered in tattoos. I may not live here in Nacogdoches, but I'm here so often, I might as well be living here. I enjoy this town, like frequent the local shops, sometimes shop locally here. I have two kids that attended SFA. One's graduated and went on to be a doctoral, have a doctoral degree in music. My other child is a senior this year, and she's going to be a school teacher. I specifically make the drive about every month or so to come see Krista, my friend, to get a tattoo. Honestly, I'm running out of room. So, I've known Krista for 12 years, and not only is she a very talented artist, but she has a big heart and an even bigger laugh. And some, yeah, someone who I consider family. I've grown, I've watched her grow from beginning few, I can't stop, sorry. I've watched her grow from the beginning of her first years that she became a tattoo artist and have followed during her tattoo career, and now she's a very successful and professional owner, business owner. Besides that, I'm here to show people that tattoo studios bring in average citizens like myself of all ages and backgrounds, Krista's studio especially. Due to the way she schedules and the amount of longtime clients such as myself, she doesn't bring a big crowd that some folks might be worried about. I've been here at every meeting to support her because I know her personally. She can be trusted, and I know that she is, she's willing to bring a lot of fun ideas and new space to the downtown area. We should be basing decisions like this on the proof of character and professionalism, not a preconceived notions, and I really hope y'all give her a chance. Thank y'all.
Sorry about that. As a homeowner and a resident of downtown historic Nacogdoches, I'm opposed to having the tattoo shop. The location, which I could be, which I think could be better served on North Street and or University Drive, in direct view of our residents, which we live directly across the street of the red brick house, I'm sure you're familiar with it. You also not be fair to us as homeowners, and the area being family-oriented, families and families, families first, families should be a top consideration. That's mine. Thank you very much.
Your name and address.
Ricardo Estrada, 5160 East Main Street, Nacogdoches, Texas. Thank you.
Mr. Hightower?
How are y'all?
State your name, address. Date of birth.
Sean Hightower. Last four of my socials, no. I work at 115 South Street, and I own the building on the corner over here. I live at 214, well, I actually live at 115 South Street at the office, but I reside in 214. I just, I've met Krista throughout this process, and I told her I'd be here to speak. One of my very best friends is Professor, PhD Professor Lee Pang, who I think Krista's done hundreds of thousands of dollars of work on that man. And I told him I would come speak on his behalf. He's wheelchair-bound, so he can't make it to these meetings very easily. It's hard for him, he lives at the lake. I live close to downtown. I think it's important for us to understand, there are two tattoo shops 1,000 yards over here. There is a bar, there's a brewery within less than 100 yards of where this proposed location is going to be. We just have to understand as a city council and as a community, our community is changing for the better. Change is not a scary thing, change is not a bad thing. We encourage business, and I think we have to do that if we send, you know, we have a cigar shop downtown that is very productive. We have a brewery that is doing very well, employs a lot of people. When it comes down to it, we have to look at the impact, economic impact of our community if we say no. And I think it's important to have a fair slate when you look at tattoo shops. You've got two of them just right here, you've got bars, you've got restaurants, you've got alcoholic beverages being sold. The property value concern to me, having a tattoo shop is, that closes at 7, is not going to hurt your property value any more than having a wine bar that stays open until midnight, or a brewery that stays open until 10, or the Hotel Fredonia that serves until midnight or 1 o'clock. So you've got all these restaurants and businesses, and that's what we want to encourage downtown. We're building an Italian restaurant that's going to serve alcohol as well. So I think just as a downtown, we have to encourage that. I support it, and I told Krista I would be here to let y'all know that I support that. I'm very involved in my community, and I think this is a good thing. I myself have a tattoo. I'm a professional person. I show up in court every day, represent people all over the town and in deep East Texas. And I know we may have personal differences about tattoos, but I have one of the remembrance of my grandmother who passed away, and actually Pat Casey did that tattoo at his shop over there while Krista worked there. So I've had one for years, and it's very special and meaningful to me, but it's also an expression of myself and remembrance of my grandmother, and that's something that Krista can do at this shop, which, again, is closing at 7. So I don't have any concern with, you know, there being derelicts hanging around downtown other than lawyers that may hang out at their offices. With that, thank y'all.
I'll agree with that.
Hi, I'm Emily Dodson. I live at 2299 County Road 711. That's Nacogdoches 75964. Hi, as I said, I'm Emily Dodson. I hold a master's degree in advertising and public relations. I work full-time at SFA, and I'm also an independent graphic designer. I've developed the marketing and branding of many local businesses, most recently Susu's right here downtown. So I'm very familiar with building a brand that positively contributes to the atmosphere of downtown. My husband and I own a local recycling company that serves Nacogdoches residents, and we both come from families that have been in Nacogdoches for more than four generations. I'm also raising three children here that I would love if they stick close by, so I am deeply invested in Nacogdoches. I want to talk to you today about why my experience as, my experience in public relations alongside my deep roots in Nacogdoches lead me to give my full support to everything that Krista is trying to do here today. Throughout this process, I've heard people say that they don't like it, they don't think that this is a suitable business for downtown, and I respect those opinions. I know that many of you that sit on the city council today do so because you ran committing to represent the interests of all people and business owners in Nacogdoches. The beautiful thing about Nacogdoches is that it is diverse in so many ways, and that diversity extends beyond the voices that are here today. It is a place where young families and new businesses want to invest their time, passion, and money by growing businesses that speak to that diverse representation of Nacogdoches. Mr. Johnson, I'm so excited about your vision as our mayor. I read an article where you reflected on your first month in office, and you spoke about the need to grow our infrastructure here in Nacogdoches to better serve the people that are here. Outdated policies and ordinances are infrastructures that are keeping Nacogdoches from growing. To create my husband's recycling business, we had to change old city ordinances. To allow the wonderful food trucks that we now have in downtown, we had to change old city ordinances. And to allow Krista to build a business that serves a community that is very passionate about Nacogdoches would mean amending an outdated city policy, one that was designed to sequester certain types of people, and it is an infrastructure that will prevent new businesses from growing here, businesses that could bring new generations of tourists and consumers to our downtown area. I know there are concerns about the type of person that this business would bring. Those are stereotypes that, as we have said, are pretty outdated, but even if they are not, even if we hold to those, we already see significant positive impact from those types of people on our downtown. For example, did you know that 80% of truckers have tattoos? This is important because as business and property owners in the downtown area, you probably know that downtown businesses are currently preparing for the second annual Old Town Rig Down event. That's in, that's in two weeks. Last year, this event brought nearly 4,000 visitors to Nacogdoches. They raised $220,000 for causes in the Nacogdoches community in just two days. And in those two days, they generated roughly $450,000 in direct sales for local businesses. That is great. So now imagine if we could repeat the already recorded impact of this community and extend its reaches by having them return to downtown, not just once a year, but often, to visit a reputable tattoo studio that they may have encountered while they were in our downtown space. Investing in multi-generational offerings for our downtown now is so imperative so that we establish, well, so that we have well-established and community-centered businesses that are already in place, so that as the demographics of our consumers and our tourists change over the next 10 to 20 years, we already have businesses in place to support that shift. Creating a space for my parents to shop downtown while making room for businesses that keep college students' dollars here and keep them returning to Nacogdoches post-graduation will help sustain a balance as we move forward. I believe wholeheartedly in the tourism and activities that are hosted in Nacogdoches, which is why I believe that we should be excited about Krista wanting to bring more commerce to downtown. I know that numbers are important, so with that in mind, I wanted to close by comparing, sorry, by comparing the growth rate of the tattoo industry to other similar industries, to other industries downtown. So Americans spend over $1.6 billion a year on tattooing. This is the estimated compound annual growth rate of that over the next 10 years is 9.4%. That is higher than retail, which is another area that we see downtown, which is expected to grow by only 3.9%, or legal services, which is what we see currently housed in many of the buildings, which is expected to only grow by 5.3%. Tattooing industry is going to grow exponentially in the next 10 years, and it's something that would be an asset to our downtown space. Krista is an incredible artist with a growing client list with people waiting to get on her books, and she's bringing in customers from different cities that would generate customers for her neighbors, for the hotel, for other areas in our town. I've already watched her go above and beyond to meet the requests of those that have been in opposition of her, so I have no doubt that she would be a very hospitable neighbor. Sure, a boutique or another business could fill this location, but I want to stress that while retail locations will continue to attract similar and repeat customers to the types that we already see downtown, Krista will be bringing in a new and diverse population to our tourism that I believe will not be easily repeated by any other business. I think that she would be an absolute asset to our downtown space, and it would be to our detriment to not include her. Thank you.
My name is Jim Elder. I live at 707 Northwood Circle. I own the building 70 feet across the street from the proposed tattoo shop. I want to tell you that I've served this community for 50 years in various capacities, county commissioner, private school, school board president, chamber of commerce president, chamber of commerce board, many downtown civic associations. I want to stand up for the people who have worked for the past five decades that I've been here to revitalize downtown. It has been slandered the last three meetings. There's people sitting in this room right now have dedicated their lives, or some of you on this board that have dedicated your lives to revitalizing downtown. It is in the best shape right now as far as occupancy that it has been in. I know some of these folks hadn't been here that long. We're old, we've been here that long. Could have shot a shotgun down that main street and not hit anybody. It's almost full. There's a few empty little here-and-there kiosks. The two big old buildings, whoever thought McLean's would be, you know, revitalized thanks to Dennis White? Who thought that the, I thought that building would have to be torn down where they put in the restaurant. So there's not as, it's not as decrepit as we would like to say. It's vitalized. It's very, and it's full of apartments and getting more. The very building that we're talking about has 12 apartments in it. So I want to take a second just to thank the folks over the last 50 years who have done the duty to bring this downtown to what it is, and it is one of the better downtowns in East Texas. I have the shop right across the street. Had it my business there for over, well, we moved there 20 years, sold it to a young man that worked for me for 19 years. Then there's the folks that bought the red brick house next door and are putting tons of money into that thing. They put their own brick streets out front out of their own pocket. The folks lived next door to them in the old blue house that has been empty, vacant, maybe a year here, a year there, somebody tries and can't do it. They're in there, they're young. These all came to town because of these houses to invest, and they're investing in them. So here we are. We want to, we have a city, we have city code, city ordinance, city planning, whatever you want to call them. As it stands, this type of business is put into this light industry. Now, I didn't make that rule, you didn't make that rule, somebody down the road in the past made that rule. Does it need to be changed? Possibly. That's not what we're here for tonight. She is asking for an exemption, and yes, she has the right to ask for that exemption. And you have the right to give it to her, you have the right to deny her. But what about the folks that are right in the front face? I'm 70 feet away. There's a red brick house that has grandkids and grandkids, and then right beside it is a young family that has babies. They have to look, it's in our face. It's not the people behind around the corner. And then we have Ralph who has his business that he took and built down there. And he, we are the four closest properties to the front door of that facility. We have rights too. And our rights are that we came here, we put our money in, we invested in these buildings. What, you remember, mine was an empty old gas station, okay, that had three doors on the bathrooms. Do we remember what those three doors were for? Yeah. And people were sleeping in it, homeless. Mr. Bryant came and bought that building that nobody could do anything with and put of life's fortune into it and did a fantastic, beautiful job and revitalized it, but then passed away, and now has children on him. And then somebody's bought the house beside me, then somebody's bought the house beside them, and then we have Ralph put his security business down there, and then we have And then we have, I think it's a barbecue place, and then we have another restaurant downtown. Then we have the Rudisels built that little strip mall of a few, three places. That area from mound to university, what was it like 20 years ago? It was scary to go down there. Was no reason to go down there. You drove through there with your doors, just doors locked. Definitely wouldn't go on there at night. It has become an asset and a contribution to the downtown. Technically, we may not be in downtown. Downtown stops at Mount Street. But we are still in the historical district, and we are still a contributing factor to downtown. So we bought those properties, invested in those properties on the, seeing what's developing there, that that is where our futures could be made. So now, we want to, we played by the rules. We played by the rules that were in place. We made our investments, we're redoing those buildings. There's some revitalization going on down there. Now the rules want to be changed in mid-game. I don't play games like that. You don't change the rules. She has every right to do it. But we, as the property owners right there, we have some rights. We have the right to live the way we thought we could, okay? We don't like it. You know, I don't have tattoos. I will say, I got no tattoos but one. And you heard this. It's this big zipper right down the middle of my chest. That's all the tattoos I need. I don't care for them, but if you want them, go for it. If you've got the money to spend on it, go for it. That's not my business. We're not here to talk about tattoos. We're talking about the lifestyle and the life that we bought into and put in financially to that area. She's not buying the building. She's not investing in the building. She's renting the building. So that's, I just think that our rights need to be respected and considered just as her right to ask for this thing. She's a great girl. I mean, I'm really impressed by her attitude, her group, how well organized they are. Man, they're pretty good. But that's not what we're here for. If she's asked for a change and you have to make a decision, are you going to change or not? And the four of us who are right in front of the face are saying, please don't. It's nothing to do with, do I like tattoos? Don't know? I don't. I personally don't. But if you want, Kathleen, if you want them, go for it, you know? I know you have them. It's okay. But, you know, it's okay. This is about what we, the property owners, have been here and are doing, how we feel now. Second, I saw the list of all the requirements that you would supposedly put on her if you were to grant her this request. But I talked to one of the commissioners about, wait a minute, she's to close at 7 o'clock. Well, that's good. Sounds good. Sounds good on paper. And I'm kind of a negative guy, I guess, you know? And I kind of looked through, I'm old. I've been around. What would prevent her from saying, you know, gosh, I've got three tattoo artists in here now and a piercer, but, oh, we all have 6:45 appointments? She's already said it takes two hours sometimes, much three to do these. What, so you can say, I'm going to close at 7? You guys can say, you have to close at 7. But the 6:45 appointment shows up. So the comment I got back was, well, we can regulate that too. We can say that she has to be empty at 7. And my response is, one, I don't know if that's legal. Somebody smarter than me is going to have to figure it out. But is that what you want to do? Do you want to put so many constraints on this business that it's going to be really hard for her to do business there, okay? So why, if you're so concerned with all the regulations to put on her, just don't grant it? Because that's really what you're doing. You're going to cripple her to not be able to do that if she's got to kick customers out at 7 o'clock. That was what was proposed to me from one of the city council members. And I don't know if they can do that or not, but maybe they can. That's for, but if this goes through, I would like to have that on there, that the building has to be emptied at 7 because then if not, you've got everybody having 6:45 appointments, and of course, oh, it's going to be a little late because the 5 o'clock appointment's running a little late. So if we're going to play this game, let's play it extremely fair. We don't really have a whole lot of legal rights to say no. We have a lot of emotional rights, and I guess we're not supposed to have those. We're supposed to see the things grow. I have seen Nacogdoches downtown grow for 50 years. I've seen the city grow. It is a very diverse city. And I'm saying, you guys have to make this decision, tough decision, tough decision. But I think that you have to know that the four people who own the closest apartments, I mean, closest properties to that are 100% opposed to this. Other than for my own reason, that's why. I'm not going to sit up here and say it's going to hurt property values. I would say, my gut feeling says it'd hurt a homeowner's property value probably a little more than it will hurt a retail like such as mine if I were to ever have to sell that building. And someday, my kids will have to sell it, I'm sure. But, you know, there's no statistics, nobody brought it up from their side that it's going to help. Nobody brought it up from our side that it's going to hurt. Gut feeling and years of experience and see to your britches, use your common sense. That's my thought. So I'm asking you for, out of respect for those of us who have been there, done it, and have proven that this is what downtown needs, I would ask you to, please turn this down. Thanks.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening. I'm the one that lives in that dreaded red brick house. I'm not big on speaking in public, but I brought my notes with me. That's okay. I'm strongly opposed across, to have the tattoo parlor located across the street in the Main Street Theater. Obviously, that's my home. It's my biggest investment. If a tattoo parlor goes in to the main theater place, my property values will negatively be impacted. The value will drop, and according to my Realtor, if we decide to sell, there'll be less people interested in purchasing that home. When it does sell, I will not get the direct value that the household's. I've been investing a lot of money in my house to renovate the interior, the exterior. And in the fall, we're going to put a Victorian-style fence that's appropriate in the front. The main, the original fence fell apart, started rusting. It's beyond repair. So Rick and I are trying to restore one of the few historic homes that was built by Dietrich Rolfe. Mine is one of them, and the blue Victorian house next door to mine is another one. And they are two, a young family. They are doing what they can, spending a lot of money, trying to restore that home. It's a lot of work restoring one of these old, beautiful homes. But once it's done, we would like to be able to sit on our porch and look across the street and just see regular businesses, not that we have a tattoo parlor across the street from our house. I'll be honest, I don't think most people want to live with a tattoo parlor across the street from their house. There's a place for every business, but across the street from a nice residence is not the place. And I'm sure that there's other nice places that she can have her business, but I really don't think it belongs across the street from where I live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What was her name? Yeah, for the record, we have to have it on tape. I'm sorry. Should have told you.
Sorry. The lady with the red brick house, Hallie Worth, 516 East Main Street.
Thank you, Hallie.
Thank you.
I just realized I never said my address for the record, so. Dr. Victoria Wagner-Green, 3308 Piccadilly Circle, Nacogdoches 75965.
My name's Tracy Nicholas. I know, I see a lot of faces that are very familiar here. I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all know me. I came to school here. I guess I need to tell you my address. 555 County Road 511, Nacogdoches, Texas 75961. I came here to go to school. And when I came here 20 years ago to go to school, the downtown looked exactly like what Mr. Elder said. You could shoot a shotgun from one end to the other and never hit a single person. And it has changed a lot. And I'm happy that it has changed a lot. When I came to school here, I never thought that I would live here for the rest of my life. And I've made it my home, and what I do for a living here is I repurpose and remodel historic homes. I've worked on both of the sister houses. I've worked on the blue house, the blue house that is directly across the street from where this proposed tattoo salon is going to be. I rebuilt the handrail around the front of the building. I also did some work inside of the building. I could sit here and try to think of how many Dietrich Rolfe homes that I've worked on, but it'd be an exercise in futility. I think I've probably worked on three-quarters of them. A lot of them. And my passion is historic remodeling. My passion is to, is history. And my passion is to keep the historical integrity of the town that I live in. And I don't see how letting these two young ladies have a tattoo salon, not a parlor, a salon, in downtown is going to change any of that. If anything, it's going to bring people into our downtown to walk the streets and to look at what we have to offer. Like I said, Mr. Elder, Jim, I count you as in my friend column. I don't know where you're sitting. But Jim is one of my friends, and we've known each other for a long time. But university rental is not bringing people to downtown to buy things other than wedding supplies for renting, right? It's not bringing people downtown to shop. The tattoo shop, the tattoo salon, will bring people downtown to shop. If my wife is getting a tattoo, I'm not going to sit there for two hours while she's getting a tattoo. I'm going to walk downtown. I'm going to look around. And the other point that I want to make is that a lot of people seem to think that there's this bad element that gets tattoos. I'm here to tell you that I'm not as white as I look. My people were the people that invented tattoos. My people that have been, that have had genocide against them by the United States government, Native Americans, were the inventors of tattoos, okay? So it's not greasy old men driving Harley-Davidsons that are always the people that are getting tattoos. It's all kinds of people. I have a tattoo right here, and to show you how much I love my country, and I love America, and I love history, this tattoo is a drawing that Benjamin Franklin made. This is, "Together We Stand, But Divided." "Unite or Die" is what it's supposed to say underneath it, right? And so if, if we don't let a business owner have her business downtown, what are we doing? What are we doing with downtown? You know, this place is going to be empty until somebody else finds something that they can put in there, which is not, there's not a whole lot of things to offer to go in there. I've seen so many boutiques come and go, and it's because people aren't looking at boutiques anymore. People aren't going to places, these boutiques as much anymore because we're doing more of that stuff online. I hate it, you know? I hate it, and I wish that people were buying locally. But, you know, Twigs and Tin, where is Twigs and Tin now? You know? And I can name 10 others that are not there. This girl has got six months of people that are going to be coming in. And so I think that we need to realize that if we put something in there that might stay, maybe we'll keep growing and getting people, getting more and more people to come in. Thank you for your time.
Hi, y'all. Dr. Charity Rakestraw. I live at 411 Richardson Street in the Zion Hill neighborhood. And I moved to Nacogdoches in 2008. I'm a historian. I've worked at SFA for a few years as an educator, and then moved on to other opportunities but chose to stay in Nacogdoches because I love it so much. And I wanted to contribute to the local history. I served as the consulting historian for the Clay House project. And if y'all haven't gone down Bodark lately, the Clay House is looking awesome. So the AHP has done a great job. And to that effect, we all know, and that's a great example, of when a building is dormant, it's so much harder to revitalize it. It's so much harder to bring back that history. And what I really appreciate about what Krista is planning to do here is to invest in the history. I'm also willing to offer my services to write the history and help with that if you'd like. Happy to do that. But I just think it's wonderful that someone wants to move a business downtown to really take care with the facade, with the efforts in the interior as well. Because the longer we let these things sit, the harder it is to bring them back. And the Clay House is a wonderful success story now, but it's taken a lot of effort to get there and a lot of money. So thank you so much, and yeah, Krista, let me know. Thanks.
Hi there. My name is Dani Spawnberg, and I live at 2123 Benita Street, Nacogdoches, Texas 75965. I am not from the area, but I am from another small town. And I moved here because my fiance lives here, and his family has lived here forever. And I fell in love with the town and we both wanted to live near family. And so, yeah, I live, and I'm happy to be here, and I'm so happy to support my community. I do work in the city, and I currently hold a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Charlton State University, not SFA, but it is a Texas school. I was a research assistant for a project presented at the American Society of Criminology Conference in Chicago, Illinois during my studies. The topic we presented was crime hotspotting and forecasting. This form of crime analysis is used to determine the areas in a city where crime occurs the most and the risk factors that could predict future crime. Several studies, including the one I was a research assistant for, concluded that bars, convenience stores, high schools, parks, bus stops, abandoned buildings, and so on, fast food restaurants are some of the many places with a statistically higher crime rate or crime attractors. However, there is little to no evidence in academic literature that tattoo shops or parlors or boutiques or studios are crime attractors. In fact, the previously mentioned places are far more likely to be centers of criminal activity due to the management practices of the facility as opposed to their nature, meaning that if you have a management that is okay with these things, it's far more likely to happen. All the supplies a person needs to do a tattoo or piercing, like needles or ink, can actually be purchased on Amazon. But reputable tattoo artists and piercers like Krista and Golden Cicada Crew buy through companies that require you to prove that you are a licensed tattoo artist or piercer before allowing you to purchase supplies. People who purchase off of Amazon are tattooing in living rooms, the back room of a sketchy establishment, warehouses. They're not going to downtown boutique studios and reaching out to the community to start their shop and make a living. Tattoo shops obviously do have a historic reputation for criminal activity, but state and federal regulations have been put into place to keep both practitioners and clients safe. The so-called criminal element of these places has been relegated to people who do not and will not go through the proper avenues to establish a legitimate business, like the Planning and Zoning Board, the city council meeting, all of that. They're not going to go through those avenues. They're just going to buy their supplies off of Amazon and then go to their buddy's house and, you know, do a tattoo there. By Golden Cicada appearing here and now to ask permission for their special use permit, they are showing that they care about the safety of their community. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Sure. You know, a shot was taken at my former business, and I have to stand up for it because it does bring tons of business into the community. These girls- These girls that are getting married, these parties that are happening are not just Nacogdoches. They come from Center, Crockett, East West Louisiana, Palestine, Henderson. They come to the building. They come here for all the different reasons. They don't just do it over the phone. More than half the business generated at that business comes from out of Nacogdoches, but yet the sales tax and revenue come to Nacogdoches. So I don't know where that shot came from. Very unwarranted. That's not the point. Stay focused on the point of what your decision should be is either to approve or disapprove based on what you heard and based on who's asking and who's wanting to be approved or who's wanting to be turned down and what each other's sides rights are. And that's all we've got.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is William Moser. I live at ten forty one Northwest Seventh Street in Grand Prairie, Texas, which is a long way from here. So you might be wondering why I'm here. I listened to all this stuff that was going on and all these things, and I was very impressed with the presentations on all sides. I'll give you, Mr. Elder, you and I are pretty much the same person. We're both old. We've both been in our community for fifty years. We've both put our blood, sweat, and tears into that community. We also own commercial property in that community. We rent out to people in the community. And we really love our community. And the reason I'm here is because I want to touch on four points. Number one, change. A lot of people talked about it. Number two, three pillars of our great com- our two cities are very similar. We have a we have a main street. We have a a historical downtown. We have a main theater. It's called the Uptown. We have a body art salon, which is right across the street from the Uptown Theater. And I sat on P and Z for eleven years in Grand Prairie. I voted on that particular issue and the same exact issues that you're facing today faced my fellow P and Z council people and the City Council. The same arguments were made, the same. And I don't want to be insulting. And I'm not trying to tell you your business. I'm just trying to say that from our standpoint, we had the same issues. People talking about property values. I can tell you for a fact, because that's tat- tattoo, that body art salon has bit semantics are important. That body art salon that's been there for going on four years now has not decreased property values. The property values on Main Street in Grand Prairie have increased every year. And the reason I know that is because I protest my tax values every year because I don't want to pay that much. Now, I own a building. In one of the buildings that I own, I own commercial property in Grand in Dallas County, in Tarrant County, in Nuones County. I had some in Brazos County, which I sold, had a great profit, which I'm happy about. And I have some in Lincoln County, New Mexico. All of that commercial property has rules, has zoning, has issues that have to be maintained and have to be adhered to. The beauty of what you're deciding tonight is all you're talking about is an SUP. SUPs can be revoked like that. Mr. Elder pointed out, what happens if people hang around till seven o'clock at night or ten o'clock at night? He revoked the SUP. I did that a lot of times on people who didn't adhere to the rules. She's Rick, Ms. Robertson is asking for a special use permit. The underlying zoning allows it, but you, in your wisdom, have decided, and Grand Prairie did the same thing, to have SUPs for body art studios. We put some different restrictions on, but what she's asking for, that's the beauty of the special use permit. I had a lot of different notes that I was going to go over, but I don't want to go over things other people have. I do not believe the, as I said, I do not believe the property right or the property value decrease is a true thing. I think it is more of a family oriented. I mean, it's not lost on you, the age of the people that are coming up here. They're not me. I don't have tattoos. Matter of fact, I have six kids. I told them all, if they ever got a tattoo, I'd get a fillet knife out and I'd pull it off myself. Three of the boys and one of the girls, listen to me. Part of the reason I'm here is because the one that didn't is sitting right there. And he's good friends with Ms. Krista. At any rate, in in conclusion, and I'll draw it up, like I said, change. Change is happening. I hate change just as much as Mr. Elder does. You know, I loathe change. It makes it hard on everybody, but it happens. And you do one of two things. You either figure out how to work inside of it and embrace it, or you get run over by it. And I don't like being run over as I like, I don't like, I don't like being run over more than I don't like change. The last thing I want to say is the things that we share in Grand Prairie that you all share here, I told you about the theater and everything else, but our great country and our great state was built on a lot of things. Capitalism was one of them. An underlying principle of capitalism is property rights. I really think property rights is important as a landowner, just like Mr. Elder is. I'm the property rights guy. I'm the property owner. I'm renting it. I want to make money. That's capitalism. But above all that, there's freedom. Freedom to do what you want to do, where you want to do it, to make money, as long as you're not infringing on someone else's right. And Ms. Robertson is putting in a business that is legal and moral. She's not infringing on anybody's right. Yes, there's an emotional issue involved, and that's what Mr. Elder and the young lady that came up and talked from the red brick house talked about. That's an emotional issue. The bottom line is, this is a, and I told, when I was chairman of the P and Z, I said to all my people on the P and Z, I said, look, I don't care what your agenda is when you come here. There are no agendas. I don't care if you're a school district person, if you're a whatever you are. The agenda is what is best for the city of Grand Prairie and what is best for the citizens of Grand Prairie. That's your agenda. And just as Mr. Elder pointed out, it shouldn't be about the emotions. It should be about what's best for the citizens of Nacogdoches or Grand Prairie in my case and what's best for the city in terms of tax revenues and things like that. That's what you need to make your decision based upon. I have known this young lady for five years. She has surprises me every time she gets up here because she's nervous as hell. I do this all the time. I was in the banking business for forty years. I was chairman of the chamber and all those other kind of things, just like Mr. Elder was. And the people that got up here and spoke about this really have a passion for your town like I have a passion for mine, as does Mr. Elder, and I don't disregard that. The thing is, change. Change is happening, and I think that it would be in the city's best interest to approve this SUP based on what's best for all the citizens in Nacogdoches, not just the four, and what's best for the tax base in the city of Nacogdoches. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Please vote in her favor.
We're gonna, I think we've heard enough. We can go to discussion now amongst the council. Anybody want to start?
Questions of Mr. Bartlett?
Yeah, I do have a question, Mr. Bartlett. Okay. You want to go ahead or you want me? Okay. All right, so we have to have four votes to accept or deny, right? It has to be a super majority.
It does, correct.
Okay. So we need to make our motion to either accept it or deny it. And four votes will either have to go four or against. Okay. That's all I got.
So it's four votes for the approve?
Four to approve. Anything other than that, it's it fails.
Okay. So you wouldn't have to have four votes to deny it?
No, no, no. Correct.
I mean, that sort of wouldn't, that wouldn't make sense.
Okay.
So I'm I'm a little confused about how this works. So I know Ms. Robertson is asking for the special use permit. And is it her business, Golden Cicada, Cicada? Cicada, thank you, that's that that gets the special use permit? Is it the owner of the business? Is it the, how does this work?
Well, it's it's the business. If she moves out, it doesn't travel with her. If she sells it, it doesn't travel with the purchaser. So it is her and her business, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So if if she sells it, if she lets somebody else operate it?
First, is Larissa?
Larissa, how does this work?
This travels just with the business itself?
It is a specific use permit is traditionally granted for the location and the specific business operation. Ms. Robertson could sell that business operation to someone else, so it's not necessarily attached to her specifically. It's attached to the operation and the location.
That's what I was saying.
Is that right?
So she could, she could sell it, she could move, she could, whatever. Correct?
But it's for this location?
It's for this location and that business.
Correct.
And the requirements?
And the the way that this business is operated. So all of the the operational requirements you put on her, the conditions would would all still apply.
Okay. So it is the business that, correct?
So the owner of the building doesn't apply for this? It's the renter?
So the owner did apply for this through their agent. Signed the application for the SUP, yes.
Okay, so they put on there.
Yes. And then we actually contacted them because their agent, the property manager agent signed the form and we contacted them to make sure they were in concurrence with the form. Personally, I talked to him, yes. Sorry. See, it's great to have Larissa.
It is. It's a team effort.
It's what happens when you get an engineer to play planner right here. This is what happens.
It's okay. You're doing good. Do you want me to start this? I can go ahead and start.
Doesn't matter.
And say my comments first.
So I'm here?
Okay. Yes. Krista, I I had the pleasure of meeting you at my office a couple of weeks ago and you are a very, very charming young lady and I'm sure you're a great businesswoman. I don't know who it was, the lady on the end down there was talking about me and infrastructure. And yes, I am concerned about infrastructure and I am concerned about growth. I I don't think I was necessarily talking about a tat- a tattoo parlor. There's, it's a, it's a lot bigger picture than just just a tattoo parlor. Anyway, I'm going to vote against this. And I'm going to vote against it because I don't want it in historic district. And I'm sorry, but I just thought I'd go ahead and get that out of the way right off the bat. I hope you do well wherever you are, and you may be down there. I've just got one vote, but that's my vote.
So Mayor, I have a, I have a couple of questions to some of the public comments. Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Baker, with the the restrictions that we can place on the SUP, how do we enforce those? Because I know the question was, let's suppose that she gets a six forty five appointment and they stay late. How how do we enforce that? What are our mechanisms and so forth?
So in general, we would have to know there was a violation going on. So we would be notified by a complaint or an observation that we made. The enforcement of that is to revoke the SUP. So we literally come back to council and we would revoke the SUP if they weren't complying with the standards of the SUP. So it would be back in your lap to finalize.
And any of those restrictions that we we place, if we are made aware that they are not being followed, we are able with this authority to revoke that SUP?
That's correct.
At our next meeting if we know about it, right? Okay. That's, I think that's all of my questions.
I had the answer to one question there.
Acting City Planner.
It may be for you, Krista. Didn't you say that there were a possibility of walk-ins on Saturdays and Sundays or something? But I mean, your business would still be open and stuff. Yeah.
So I, go ahead.
I just wonder, when you mentioned the arts and entertainment district, what are the boundaries of that? You want to come up?
I'm sorry.
Well, I think you mentioned the arts and entertainment district. What are the boundaries of that? Because I know somebody else said that downtown stops at mound. So I'm just curious. Do you know the boundaries of the, are these boundaries that exist? I don't know.
I'm not sure. I was just told that people were trying to expand to make downtown more artsy and an art arts district, but I'm not sure if there's like a boundary to that, honestly. I just don't know.
In the comprehensive plan that people are working on and on the downtown plan, aren't they talking about fixing some of our zoning issues and things?
I also don't know.
Does anybody else know? Anybody for the comprehensive plan or the downtown? The reason I'm asking is that that maybe you've been the tip of the spear and maybe you're forging too soon before, I mean, we haven't actually worked out the comprehensive plan. We haven't worked out the downtown plan. And it seems like if that's coming, maybe it's a bit soon to to be asking for something that is pretty, pretty out there. You know, it's not that this tattoo is bad.
Sure.
You know?
I do think that at this, the planning and zoning meeting, I did do a little research about how the proposed plan was to be mixed use. So I think that was kind of what I was aware of, about it being more mixed use, but that was the only thing that I was kind of aware of as far as that. But I, you know, would like to be.
Been put into mixed use yet.
Right. Yeah. But I would definitely like to be involved in that as well. I just didn't want to step away because you have more questions. Okay.
I recorded a few notes, but most of it is already being spoken of. One of the things I received also information after I got here, that amount of, the percentage of the general public that have tattoos, but they also indicated sixty-five to seventy-five percent of convicted felons have tattoos. What I think they fail to realize, that's sixty-five to seventy-five percent of felons that's been convicted and they're getting their tattoos in.
In prison.
So I I that's useless information. But.
I agree.
Doing in my research, I I have here now, one in three adults have a tattoo. And it says tattoos becoming more popular and mainstream than in recent years. Tattoos is now considered an art form. Tattooing is a form of artistic expression that deserves protection under the First Amendment. Therefore, zoning ordinance that prohibit tattoo parlors are unconstitutional and that should be upheld. But anyway, one of the things is, we're talking about tattoos, but most of the conversation that's anti sup tonight is presumptive that the tattoo parlor brings seedy environments to the city. That is not true. There is no data whatsoever to prove that. There's going to be a seedy group of people, like the felons. They don't come to tattoo parlors. They get it when they go to jail. So it's just an image people are trying to portray in order not to get the sup passed. And I talked to, I'm in Dead Cock, so maybe because small cities like someone else dated that they did, about tattoos being downtown. And there's no data whatsoever to prove it lowers the property values of a business or residential area in a district zone. Thank you, Mayor. I'm voting for this.
I don't need you to stand.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking because he's, he told me to stay here.
Sorry.
Does anybody else want to go first?
Well, you may have to come back up, but I was just curious because you said shopping, there was some shopping being done and some art you were going to sell and things.
Yes.
How does that work with a, is there biohazard material in a tattoo?
Very little, yes.
But I mean, there is some.
Yes. We keep it all in a sterilization room that's separate from everything.
So people could come in your shop and cup in your store and shop? So people could come in your shop and cup in your store and shop while other people are getting a tattoo?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, is there any danger in that of?
No.
I know you said autoclaves are safe, but I've been reading a lot about them and they're like a pressure cooker, aren't they?
Essentially, they are, yes, but the way that the health department regulates is that we have to have a certain list of them, and they're more like tabletop autoclaves, they're very small. The types of autoclaves that are usually pretty dangerous are like industrial sized ones that are also like old. A lot of the stats that I've looked up, that anybody had had any problems with one, like having any issues, is because it has like a cracked door or like it's old. So basically, the health department has to check up on those things, and if we had anything wrong with those, they would be like, absolutely, you need to toss this, or you need to get a new one, or you need to get it fixed. So as long as you're doing everything right, then you shouldn't have an issue. But, but yes, like I said, I mean, people should be able to come and go just fine. Like I said, I even have clients that have their kids sit, you know, there happily and just fine while they're getting a tattoo. So there's nothing in there that I would want to put them in danger of as well.
Excuse me, I missed one line that I was going to read and forgot. Some of the, on the research and some of the ones that stated that they didn't have an issue with the sup, we clearly have disposable income to spend, and that means we are gainfully employed members of society. And I want, and it says, did I mention we have extra money to spend that surrounding business?
Ms. Robertson, I have a couple of questions for you. I've spoken with a number of the residents in the area, and you've heard their concerns tonight. Tell me your perspective on operating a business where you know that the surrounding property owners are not in favor of you being there. Tell me how you operate under that scenario if this is approved.
Well, like I said before, I was really hoping to try to bridge that gap and let them know that like I will be a respectful neighbor. That's what I want more than anything, and I understand that the opposition feels that it's something they don't want to see across the street, but the reason I would assume is why is because they think there's, it's gonna bring a bad environment or bad people or bad clients or people that they're not comfortable with. And like I said, that to me is just not true, and I just want them to see that. I want to educate them, I want to be, I would be happy to walk out of here, get their number, shake their hand, and try to figure it out and make them comfortable if they can. I don't know if I can do that, I know I can't convince everybody, but I do want to try, and that's really all I can do.
Thank you. I guess this is not really a question, you're welcome to sit down, I'm sure you'll probably get called back up. But I want to share with the council what my perspective is on this. I've met with most of the residents of this area. The south side of Main Street is in my ward, the other side is not, where the business will be located. And obviously, there's vocal opposition to that. But as some have spoken tonight, our responsibility is for the entire city of Nacogdoches, not just those that are right around. And I want, that's what having the twenty percent rule means. That means you do get your time here, you get the opportunity to raise that bar that we have to meet a certain threshold to say if this is a good idea or not. I don't think we can question the business owner's responsibility. She's proven in another location with a specific use permit adopted by the city council that she would operate in a respectable way. I think we are at the point where we have to decide what are we gonna put in places. I think, Mr. Bolden, the quote you read about the First Amendment, I think I saw that in a letter from Lee Payne, who I highly respect and was on my thesis committee. This is a tough decision. I know many of you have said it's a tough decision for this council. I don't want, I don't want any stone left unturned. If we're going to approve it, there will be restrictions. There have to be restrictions because it is a historic district. That is our responsibilities as a member of the city council. But to dismiss it out of hand and say there's no condition under which we can approve this, I think it's doing a disservice to her business and to our community. That's my perspective.
Okay, now, what are you saying, Chad? What did you just say? Are you talking about me?
No, I'm talking in general, that if we don't do it, I think that it's a disservice to the community.
I've already told you why.
And I understand it.
Okay, alright, okay.
And I respect you.
Okay. I just wanted to make clear.
Crystal, next.
I'm ready to say my two cents. Special use permits are not rights, they're permits. They're things that we give permission for. So I think we need to keep that in mind, they are just permission. And there are objections, and they've already been discussed. Some of them have been raised, other ones have not been raised. Some have been raised privately to me, but there are objections. I think it's really important to understand that this is a historic area, that people have invested their life savings and their future life savings in this, in their historic homes and in their historic businesses, or their businesses in this historic area. I know I myself, we were pioneers actually in preserving Adetrick Rolfe's home. Somebody once asked me, boy, how much is your home worth? And I said, how much have we spent on it or how much would we get? And it's far more, these people are spending far more money investing in their homes that are right in that area, and they've spoken and said this is not something they want, for whatever reason. That's what they have said. There are questions about property values. We have a letter here from a Realtor, a local Realtor, saying it does impact property values. And there have been several Realtors who have told me that this would impact property values, right or wrong, whatever, but it does impact property values. There, the kind of tourism may be impacted, we don't know, we can't predict that. There are twenty-seven, what is it, twenty-seven square miles of this city. So the property owners, they can't move, but businesses can, particularly when they're renting. So I think it's very, very important that we understand that. But above all, specific use permits, zoning, go with the property and the business, not the person. So I am sure you're wonderful at what you do, I'm sure you're a wonderful person, I know you have many friends, but that's not the question here. The question is, what, what is, who owns the property and what is it they're worried about? So I think you know my conclusions. So I think the property owners right there who are investing their life savings have got to be heard and respected, and I wish you, I wish you all good things in what you do. And I'm sorry I couldn't, I was out of town, or I would have visited with you in person.
Okay. Any other comments, call for a question? Anybody want to make a motion?
No.
No, we've already.
If there's no motion, does it work?
It's about me, you can tell me after the meeting.
You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I don't have, yeah, agenda. I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item B. Consider a specific use permit to operate a tattoo salon piercing studio in B2, General Business District on Lot 16B, City Block 6, located at 507 East Main Street.
Okay, all in favor?
It has to be a second.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bolden, do you intend that with the conditions that were presented?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Three to two, congratulations. Okay, let's go to the next, public hearing. Consider amending a previously approved specific use permit for a piercing studio. Pardon me?
Yeah. Yes, can we recess, please?
We're gonna recess for five minutes. Next item, 6C. A public hearing, consider amending a previously approved specific use permit for a piercing studio to also include a tattoo salon in a B2, General Business District on Lot 16, Block 67 of the North Heights Edition subdivision, located at 3500 North Street, Suite 10. This request has been submitted by Primal Piercing and Jewelry, case number SUP 2023-03. Mr. Bartlett, please, thank you.
Mary Council.
Steve Bartlett, playing city planner.
You're doing good.
So we have another specific use permit issue to discuss with you. This request is to amend an existing specific use, so it's slightly different than the one that you just discussed. There is currently an SUP in place. It was originally approved in October of last year, and it's for a piercing studio that's located at 3500 North Street and Suite 10. That's the Lakewood Shopping Center that has two different buildings. This is in the back building. You can see it right there. The property is currently Zoned B2, which is general business, and requires an approval of a specific use permit to operate a tattoo salon or piercing studio in this zoning district. The surrounding areas along North Street are developed as commercial properties, and the properties to the east and the north are single family. The proposed conditions will be, and by the way, this is also a jewelry store, I forgot to add that. So this is an active jewelry store, and they currently do piercings in conjunction with that jewelry store. So what they're trying to do is add some tattoo artists to that, so portfolio. So right now, the jewelry store operates from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The piercing studio and tattoo parlor would operate from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and that would be Tuesday through Saturday, again, closed Sunday and Monday. The applicant plans to share the space with either a guest and/or a permanent tattoo artist with a maximum of two piercers and two tattoo artists operating at the same time. Here are some site photos, you probably have seen this complex, but they're at the very back side, they're the Primal Piercing. Again, views from Lakewood Street and the west side of the shopping center. So just like before, there are eight conditions for approval. And we won't read through all the details, but these are what you use to make these decisions based on. Typically, like the last one, compatibility is always a big factor we use. Since this was a already approved SUP, staff feels like there's been no change in the conditions for approval from our viewpoint, so we'll kind of let you know that. So our 200-foot notification, we were sent out nine notices to these property owners. We received one written response in support and one written response in opposition. This does not trigger, this does not trigger the super majority, so this would be a regular voting majority. Staff facilitated a neighborhood meeting also with all the property owners, we invited or sent notices to folks within the 500-foot back on July 12th to discuss and answer any questions. Nobody attended that meeting other than the applicant and staff, so nobody showed up. P&amp;Z reviewed this request and voted unanimously in support of the request as we presented to you. Tonight, your options are to approve the SUP as we've shown you with the conditions, to approve it with additional conditions, or to deny the SUP. I'll be happy to answer questions after public support, and is the applicant here? I'm sorry. Okay, I don't believe the applicant's here to make a comment, so.
Okay, anybody have public comment on this one? I'll tell you right now, I don't have any problem with this one at all, I think it's right where it needs to be. They're already doing tattoos or whatever they're doing there, so I think it's, nobody's here to oppose it. Nobody came to a meeting to oppose it, so I don't have a problem with it at all, so that's my deal. Matter of fact, I'll make a motion, if nobody's got anything to say.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it. Item 6C. And Chad's second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, moving right along. D, consider approval of the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation professional services contract. Ms. Larissa.
Mayor and Council, Larissa Philpott-Brown, your Economic Development Director and the President and CEO of NedCo. We are here for our annual report and also asking you to renew our contract for another two years. I apologize to those of you that are, have been on the council for several years. Some of this is a repeat, but I want to make sure everybody gets this information every single year. Just a reminder about our NedCo structure. You invest and have invested for quite some time, our largest membership investment of $120,000 a year, with very importantly also $13,000 in kind donation of graciously allowing us office space here in City Hall, which I think is a huge asset to both the city and NedCo. Additionally, though, we get another $230,000 from Nacogdoches County, NISD, SFA, and I think super importantly from business and industry partners. Folks in the community for several decades now write checks out of their own pockets to make sure that we can continue to do this work. We also regularly seek grants, you'll hear a little bit about that later. So altogether, this funds a $362,000 departmental budget. So for your $120,000 investment, you get the labor and the productivity of a $360,000 Economic Development Department and organization. Just for clarification, I know this kind of confuses folks. Myself, Mary Frances Bradford and Casey Foster are all your employees, we're employees of the city, and you contract us to the nonprofit, that is NedCo. That is separate and apart from the $120,000 membership fee that you pay. So you pay that membership fee, NedCo provides these services, you contract myself and the two ladies in my office, and NedCo reimburses the city 100% of all of our personnel costs. So all of that is not in addition to, you don't pay in addition to that $120,000, so it's a pretty good deal. Our structure, and I know the mayor has discussed this many times, but just as a comparison, we do always compare ourselves to our sister city to the south of us. Lufkin is a 4B city, which means they do levy a 4B sales tax, they're an economic development corporation. They get a quarter of a cent. In 2022, that meant about $1.3 million in revenue. That's not all sales tax, they do have some revenue off of the property that they own, they're able to lease and take debt against that property. That same year, NedCo collected about $343,000 a year. So you can see there's quite a stark difference there between the way we operate and the way Lufkin operates. That doesn't mean that it's better or worse. While I would love to have that money, our structure means that we focus on programmatic assistance and advocating for a good business climate. So that means that we hold job and entrepreneurship fairs. We work closely with businesses to try to get their projects off the ground and get their doors open, and then we do a lot of advocating. So we advocate, we ask, we assist, instead of inducing with checks essentially, which is what some other economic development corporations are able to do. I'm gonna run through some statistics and some information here really fast. Last year, you heard that we received a grant for, to participate in the Center on Rural Innovation. The mayor participated in some of that just a few months ago. We're essentially in the assessment and strategy phases now, and the goal of this is to grow our tech economy here in Nacogdoches, to grow more of those jobs, of people that can work from home and build tech-based jobs in our economy. We work very closely in business development with the Angelina College Small Business Development Center and also SFA's newly started Small Business Resource Hub. We're able to provide some funding to both of those organizations in the form of sponsorships. We also help them meet clients in our office. We're a downtown location for those folks, and so that's, I think they've put up some really great numbers there. In the past few months, I know you know that we've worked a lot on residential development. In the past few months, um, I know, you know that we've worked a lot on residential development. We continue to work on that to this day. Um, but coming soon, you will also hear us again working with you, um, to facilitate requests for low-income housing tax credits, as well as some additional, hopefully, residential, um, developments. Mary Frances and Casey and our office work really hard with the chamber to produce business development seminars. You can see there, we cover all sorts of topics. Most recently, we had, um, a class focused on doing business with SFA, um, and the University of Texas system, which I think that has brought a lot of, a lot of emotion and concern, rightly so. Um, just fears about change and how, how that big economic driver would continue to impact our community, and I feel like that seminar did a lot to alleviate some of those fears. We had experts from SFA Purchasing there to help answer those questions, um, and I think it was really successful. The room was full of, of folks that were of businesses. You all are familiar with all of these, but we, we facilitate these economic development agreements. Um, and I can tell you those, those are not one-meeting projects or decisions. Um, you know, I bring them to you several months in advance if we can, and we talk about them, and we analyze them, and, and, and act as your liaison. Um, and I say this all the time to, to my colleagues over here, um, that I, that at Nedco, we straddle between the city and the businesses and try to be that liaison, um, to help these businesses thrive. Of course, I couldn't, couldn't walk away without mentioning, um, Eaton. We're gonna keep bringing this up as men, as much as we can. Um, our groundbreaking for that is, is tentatively scheduled for October sixteenth, so we hope to see you all there. We had a great pre-development meeting about that today. Um, the construction, um, hopefully will break ground very soon. Um, we're hoping to get through the permitting process here in the next two months and let them break ground soon. We do a lot of advocacy. Um, we are very active in the Transportation Advocates of Texas, which gives little Nacogdoches a seat at the table with folks like the San Antonio Mobility Council, um, the Greater Houston Partnership, really, really big folks in transportation, and they let us have a seat at their table. Um, the Alliance for I-69 is instrumental in advocating for federal and state dollars for I-69, and we, we play a leadership role there. We also submit federal appropriations requests on behalf of the city and the county. Um, notably, the, the fifty-nine-two-fifty-nine interchange, um, along, Nedco along with the City Engineering Department really worked hard with Tech Dot to make sure that that design of that interchange works best for Nacogdoches, and we indicated that we expected some future industrial growth in that area and that we would need frontage roads immediately. And our local engineers not only came back with frontage roads that Tech Dot would be paying for, um, but also a truck parking area for Tex, that Tech Dot would be paying for. We weren't, if Mr. Bartlett and I hadn't have brought that up, those costs would have, would have fallen on our, our local jurisdictions or the local businesses, so that's savings in the millions of dollars that we were able to get. Also, the Jobs, Energy, Technology, and Innovation Act is something that, um, your state legislators passed in the last year. We worked with colleagues in Austin to ensure that Nacogdoches jobs and Nacogdoches companies, um, would be included in this new economic development tool, so we were, we were proud of that. We are currently managing seven expansions and projects. Um, when I say managing, that means we are working with them on site locations, on, um, acting as a development liaison when they call and say, hey, I need a plumbing permit, or hey, what's the setback on this property line? Um, we help them find local contractors to make sure that they do as much hiring locally as they can. Um, we work with the City Engineering Department on infrastructure extensions, and of course, as you know, um, incentive negotiation. And then once we get the agreements in place, the work doesn't stop. We require them to submit reports to us every year. Um, we make sure that we monitor the businesses that they're, that they're doing well, because what we don't want is to go through all of this work and then the business not succeed and hire all the jobs we expected them to hire. In entrepreneurship, um, which is very close to my heart, um, and I know also close to our incoming, um, Chair Scott Boyer's heart, we held a fantastic resource fair this year, which opened, we were at the Hotel Fredonia, um, and we invited, um, entrepreneurs and small business owners to come to this fair and essentially talk to service providers. So there were banks there, there were marketing firms, Small Business Development Center, city permits. Um, anybody that you could think of that a small business would need services from, they were there. Um, and we had more than fifty small businesses attend, which was, the room was absolutely full. I, I think we, we decided we need to double the space next year, so we were excited about that. Um, continuing our work with the SFA, um, with Hispanic entrepreneurship, we worked with a class at SFA to film financial literacy videos, um, in Spanish that we've published on YouTube, and they're getting tons of hits, so we're excited to continue that. We also regularly, um, just track local data for any of you to use, any of our local businesses to use. We just completed our annual wage and benefit study, which has been really helpful to our businesses over the last couple of years to show, hey, this is what everybody in town is doing as far as wages go, to make sure everybody's competitive. Um, also, we, we participate in a nationwide cost of living index. So when someone says, okay, this is the salary I'm trying to attract people at, is it going to work? We can show them, well, actually, the cost of index, the cost of living index is here versus here for Austin or here for Plano, um, and it helps us attract more folks to town. And then also our regular economic indicators that we keep track of. Um, one quick note there, median household income is one that we're working on. Um, I just bring that up to show you why we were so excited about our Eaton project. Um, the median household income right now is, is a little over forty-three thou, or almost forty-four thousand dollars. Um, so to have an average wage from Eaton of sixty-seven thousand dollars a year is, is, is very important. So with that, um, just wanted to hit some statistics before I invite Scott Boyer up to talk a little bit about his, um, vision for Nedco and, and what he hopes to do next year. Um, statistics, so we had a hundred and fifty job seekers at our job fair. Seventy-six small business clients supported through our Small Business Development Centers. Um, we held small business seminars every other month. We, um, attended at least ten orientation or showcase Saturday events in support of SFA. Um, we're there to kind of be a friendly face for Nacogdoches and to tell folks that it's okay to drop your babies off here at SFA, and they, they will find jobs, and they will find dentists, and they will find a place to, to get their, their tires changed on their car. Um, we administered a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar grant. Um, we worked for a three-million-dollar federal appropriation, and then, of course, um, the fifty-nine-two-fifty-nine interchange with the frontage roads. Not sure what that value is, but, but it will be very valuable to us in the coming months. Um, and with that, I'd like to invite Scott up for just a moment.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Councilmember. I'm Scott Boyer, um, incoming Chairman of Nedco, and, uh, I got just a couple of points on the, on where we're going in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, but just like you guys, you know, I could spend my time, my volunteer time, a lot of places, and we do. Uh, but I have a passion for economic development. Part of that's being a banker, uh, but part of it's just what my passion is, and specifically workforce development is a, is a huge piece of what we've got to do. The Eaton, it was just the tip of the iceberg there. Uh, we have a lot of needs prior to that, before that, so we've got to continue to roll forward with that, and I think you'll really see some, uh, some plans and some action uh, as we try to, try to move that forward. Again, we've, we've, you know, we've been back and forth on that some over the past decade or so. Um, you know, residential infill is a huge, housing is a huge need. Uh, we all know, you guys have, have worked with some developers, I know, uh, with some arrangements. Uh, you know, Larissa's worked, uh, a billion hours, you know, with those developers, and we just want to see those through. Uh, you know, it's a tough environment. Us bankers are charging a lot right now on loans, and so it's, it's a tougher environment right now than, uh, than maybe it's most desirable, so seeing those through. Um, entrepreneurship is a passion of mine. I'm not one. I'm way too scared, uh, to, to invest my money. But my role in entrepreneurship is I get to be a banker. I get to see other people's dreams come true and help them. And I had some notes, things that I was gonna say about the passion in Nacogdoches for entrepreneurship. After tonight, I don't think I have to tell you about passion. Regardless of which way you had voted, that's what entrepreneurship is. I mean, absolutely. Whether she moves, goes to another location or something, that is what it's about. And we saw a room full of those people that night at our resource fair and the countless other things we've done. So all the notes I had about entrepreneurship, I scrapped when I saw, uh, tonight, because that's what it's about, you know? That's what it's about. And, um, you know, project facilitation is the other thing I will hit. You know, we, I don't think you can even fathom the number of hours that the staff puts in and the time it takes. I know, I know you do. I mean, you, you see it, you feel it, but the amount of hours and time and, and things that, that the staff puts into making a deal happen like with Eaton and the other, uh, things that are, that are ongoing, and those are, you know, I, it's a three-year term as chairman. I hope, some of those may not make it. They may make it, and they may outlive me. I mean, you know, because some of them take that long, you know, and the hours that go into that. Uh, the others, airport development, we need to continue to, to work there. That is a huge economic development engine there that we can work with. And I know a lot of that is funding through, through Tech Dot Aviation and others that we've got to continue to work through, and I think the staff is, is on top of that, and you'll continue to see that ball move forward. Uh, the Cory, uh, Mayor Johnson, you and I sat in, in a workshop in this room, and there is a whole lot of people, a whole lot more, uh, intelligent than you and I as it comes to, to that, that we, it opened our eyes. I think you would, you would agree, uh, what opportunities there are out there, and I think you're gonna really see that continue to develop, that plan. And then I-69, as Larissa just said, that's a huge piece of all of our lives, and that'll, that'll outlive a lot of us. Um, but it, it's a huge, we got to keep beating that drum and getting what we want where we want it. And so I just, I thank you for your, your funding over the years. I hope to, uh, stand here again before you next time and, and thank you again. Uh, and just, um, I want to publicly say how, how valuable the staff is and what they do, and you should be proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any public comment? Okay, uh, you got anything, Betty? Okay, Larissa, Larissa, excuse me, would you, would you pull that slide back up to compare, uh, Nacogdoches and Lufkin?
No, which one you're talking about? I knew that would touch your heart.
Okay. Do what?
I wonder what.
Okay, all right. Let, let me say this, and I'm not real long-winded, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. Okay. My goal is to see this town really have an economic development corporation to where we can draw funds from part of that one cent that, that goes to our hospital district. It's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm gonna stay on it like a bulldog. I'm gonna tell you. Before I, I became mayor, you know, I heard, and I was probably one of them, that I didn't think Nedco did anything. I didn't think they, I think that was just a club, you know? But you know, when you sit in this chair and you look and you see what goes on every day, and you see how hard people work, and I'm gonna give you credit, Larissa, y- y- you absolutely spend countless hours for this city, you know? And you have worked your tail off, you know, to do things that people don't know about, you know? And I admire you for that, and, and a lot of people will say, well, Nedco doesn't do anything. Well, maybe I was one of those, you know, but I'm not anymore. I'm glad we've got it now, because if we didn't have it, we wouldn't have anything. Zero, nothing. And then what would we do? We'd just be floundering out there just like a fish, you know? So anyway, I, I appreciate the relationship that we have with Nedco right now. My goal is as soon as possible to make it a real economic development corporation to where we'll have funds to work with, where it will be a lot easier for us for people in this community to say, oh, well, you know, the old regime doesn't want it to grow. Let me tell you something, that's not true. We can't grow because we're stuck with that one-cent sales tax that, that got tied up in nineteen ninety-three. That is ten million dollars a year. I'm not saying all of that should go to economic development, but some of it could. Okay, I'm through. I could keep going, but, but I'm through.
Go ahead, Brad.
Randy One-Cent Johnson.
That's it.
And we're proud of him.
Oh, one cent, yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
So, um, is, is there any other discussion, because I'm gonna make my motion?
I just want to say I'm really surprised, because I kept hearing all those roads, the access roads on I-69 was gonna be something that the city of Nacogdoches was gonna have to pay for, or the county, I guess. And it's not. You guys got them, got Tech Dot to pay for the access roads. Is that what I heard?
Between Steve, Steve's Engineering Department and, and Nedco, we, we showed them a need, and they included them in, in this design.
That's millions of dollars, isn't it?
I believe so. I believe so. If we had not shown them the need, then they would have, they would have been installed later as the need arose. Um, and so it would have been much more expensive, and, and the cost likely would have fallen on the city or the county or whichever business needed those, those frontage roads.
Who has ownership of the truck parking?
It is so, so the way it's designed, it's, it's a truck kind of queuing area, and it's in wholly within the Tech Dot right-of-way. So Tech Dot would own it and maintain it. Um, we told them the area would likely be industrial development, because we're running out of industrial sites. Um, and they said they have problems all over the state with trucks queuing in the right-of-way. We see it in our, in our industrial area to the south, and so this is just one, a, a safety feature, but I also think it's a great selling point for those, those, the properties in that area as well. So, thank you very much for your, for your kind words, and I also, I, I couldn't leave without saying thank you so much to our dedicated staff. This is a team, and also all of our, our fifty-plus members that contribute, just like the city does.
I, I don't sugarcoat anything. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you what you want to hear. I'll tell you, because you earned it.
Thank you.
I just have one comment to make, to pee back on what the mayor said. Uh, the work that you do, Larissa, and, and your team, and, and the, the Nedco board is, that's what you do with three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. Imagine what you could do with a million. It, it would just be game-changing.
I wouldn't say no.
Just thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Okay, because I do not want to see the city of Nacogdoches floundering like a fish. I move to approve the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation professional services contract.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
I could not resist that.
You talking about me? Okay, uh, next item is six E, public hearing. Hold a public hearing and receive citizen input on the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget. Ms. Pam.
Mayor, Council, tonight, um, we're going to have our one and only public hearing on the budget. Um, we are going to go over a couple of changes. They were very minor, so, um, with that, we'll kind of start back with the property taxes. Can't see with or without glasses. Um, so the proposed tax rate that y'all voted on a couple of, of weeks ago is included in this budget is the no new revenue rate of forty-seven-point-four-four-five cents per hundred-dollar valuation. That is split between an O and M component of forty-six-point-three-three-two-three-four-two cents per hundred dollars and a debt rate of one-point-one-oh-three per hundred-dollar valuation. This generates, um, thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three, one, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars in new value, uh, revenue from the new value that was added this year. So on the general fund, this is almost identical to what we have seen, um, in the last couple of budgets. With the one exception, we added, um, three thousand dollars, um, for the SFA library contract. Went up this year. We got a notification last week that that had been, um, increased from thirteen to sixteen thousand. So while we still had the option, we went ahead and, and included that so that we didn't have to do a budget amendment during the year for that. Other than that, this is the same, the same numbers that we went over on, um, I guess, the August the fifteenth budget. Um, on utility fund, same thing here. The only difference is we had one additional, uh, fifty-eight hundred dollars added for an AT&T. We have to have a new line for the lake, um, and so that, that expense was added, um, since the August the fifteenth, um, date. There were no changes to the sanitation fund. This is as proposed and as presented at the August the fifteenth date as well. And so, um, since this is a public hearing, that's pretty much my spiel, and I'll move out of the way.
Okay, do we have any public comment? There being none, I'll open it up for discussion among the council.
Mayor, if I may, uh, just have a, a couple of comments to make. Uh, one that I think I heard you make a, a few weeks ago. Uh, on our interest in sinking debt rate, we have- you make a, a few weeks ago. On our interest in sinking debt rate, we have just over one penny of debt.
Yes.
That is the only general fund debt the city of Nakadoches has, and it's for the ladder truck.
Ladder truck. Yes.
Okay. And the other main point that I want to make is that the city has adopted the no new revenue rate. We have not increased property taxes to fund this coming budget. Correct?
We, we haven't adopted it. We proposed it. That'll be next week. But yes, it is proposed.
We'll do the budget and then.
Right, right, right.
Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So if anybody's got any more questions, Pam, you can sit down.
No, you can close the public hearing and then I'm standing up here.
Wait just a minute.
I got the next item too.
Right. Just a minute. Okay. Then the public hearing is closed, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And then let's go to F. Consider approval of ordinance approving and adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending September thirty, two thousand twenty-four, providing that said expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget unless otherwise authorized by an ordinance adopted by city council, providing for repeal clause, providing severability clause, and providing an effective date.
So tonight, you have the option of going ahead and adopting the budget. Since there was no changes made prior in the, the public hearing, y'all, y'all are more than welcome to go ahead and do that. You can also have an option to postpone till next Tuesday. Just keep in mind that the budget has to be adopted prior to the tax rate. And so if we do postpone, it would be the very first item, the budget would be adopted and then setting the vote to set the tax rate. But pin, barring any other changes, there's, there's no reason that we can't vote on it tonight. It just must be a record vote. And that's pretty much all that.
Any public comment? There being none, I'll make a motion to adopt the budget for fiscal year October one and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Next item is G. Consider the ratification approval of emergency contract between the city of Nakadoches and Dupla Chain Contractors for the construction of a new storm sewer system along Park Street and Mound Street in an amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Mr. Bartlet. Mayor, council, Steve Bartlett, Public Works Director now. So.
Wait a minute.
Much more comfortable. So, and, and I think I spoke to each one of you just a little bit individually to keep you apprised of this emergency storm drain project. This is, as you recall, the old rectangular storm drain that went under First Christian Church and under a couple of houses on Mound that failed. We did some emergency repairs to it. I thought I'd include this picture on the left up there. That is an, an inside picture of that storm drain underneath that house. So you can see when I say failed, it is literally collapsed. And so kind of amazing that it held together the way it did till we got there. So the temporary pipes that we put in are certainly undersized from where we'd like them to be. And we need to very, very quickly get a new, larger storm drain line in place. That storm drain line would come down Park Street, you can see in yellow, turn and go down Mound and then tie back in, basically bypass all the structures and the private properties. It'll have a little sticker line that goes up behind First Christian to tie into those lines there. So the total cost of this, we've done it under an emergency design. So we've hired KSA engineers to come in and literally do, if you will, almost field designs with us. In other words, not a full buildable set, which would take us months to get through. And we have negotiated with Dupla Chain Contractors who's already on an indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery contract with us for emergencies. This one just exceeds the size that that contract can be. So we have to come to you separately. So we have reviewed all their pricing. We do have some expedited deliveries and things that is driving some of the numbers a little high. I will tell you, we're, we're custom shipping in some pipes right away. But we went ahead and moved forward and, and executed that contract so they could get underway. We're here tonight to ask you to ratify that decision and let us move forward with a contract of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars and not to exceed. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment. Okay. Any public comment? There being none. Any discussion? I'll make a motion.
Can I have just one little question?
Okay.
When do you think this is going to be completed by? What, what's your timeline here?
So, so I don't actually have a target date yet. We're, we're negotiating the time schedule. But we are hoping within forty-five days, I'm hoping to get that done.
That's pretty quick. And what would happen if we do? I know you're trying to get it in before any kind of hurricane or any kind of, you don't want to even hear the question.
Well, there, there's, there's drainage there. Again, it's just, it can be overloaded easier than we would prefer. So we are hoping to get this in. That's really the rea, the reason I've told you. It's an emergency. Not only is it collapsing, but we're worried about, again, First Christian Church flooding in an extreme event. So I'll, I'll let you guys know better on schedule. We just, I just delivered the contract to them Thursday, the order of materials. So we're in the middle of establishing that. But they understand it as a full go. We're a full go. So I'll give you some better information on that once we finalize that schedule.
Basically, if we don't do it, we'll be floundering like a fish.
Like a, like a big fish.
Yes. Is there any liability from the property owners, that house that it went under and, or the church or anything like that for the city?
Well, I mean, the question is, who was there first and who built on top of things? And so I guess that's a better question that would have to be resolved through some kind of legal avenues. But the storm drains there, we certainly claim ownership of it and operations to it. And now that we've been apprised of this condition, we have a responsibility to fix it. And that, that's our liability, is our current knowledge of it. And Jerry, if I've said that wrong, but. And Assistant City Attorney.
Assistant to the.
So, so we're, we're hoping, and by the way, once we get all this done, we're, we're going to have a, a separate little exercise to try to backfill this with some kind of flowable concrete fill best we can. It's a difficult thing to do, to try to secure the ground under the buildings. We'll do that after we're through the, getting the pipes in the ground part to try to do it. And then go through and quit claiming easements that we may have, or abandoned easements that we may have. Those are things we can do while we're calm. Right now, we want to get pipes in the ground.
Mr. Bartlett, what other areas of town do we face similar issues with? What is your next? I know you have a list of things that you're afraid of happening. This is one that had to be handled before, we had to do an emergency on this.
Correct.
And I know you have a number of projects that are coming, coming toward us. What's your next thing? What are you expecting there?
And I may have several next things to really answer that question. But we have some failures. Burke Street's a good example in your ward. We did some temporary repairs to what you might call the Burke Street Bridge, but it's actually a big storm drain kind of project. And that thing has collapsed and gone. We have, we just put some duct tape on it to hold it. But that one is absolutely next on my list from a safety standpoint. Storm drains in.
Little Zion.
Pardon?
Little Zion.
Little Zion, yes, correct. Little Zion's got collapsing storm drains.
I just didn't want you to forget that.
And you've reminded me before of this project. And that is on the list too. Absolutely, Mr. Bolden. So we also have some collapsing storm drains in Broadmoor, believe it or not, which is a newer storm, two thousand and four era storm drain. We have some that will literally look similar to this picture. So that'll have to be addressed in our near future. And I'm sure we've got some others. Some of them are capacity issues. Some of them are failures like this. But just to name a few.
Well, and certainly the Burke Street, when you and I have talked about. But that's, that's probably the one that keeps me up at night.
Yep. I keep up about a bunch of them at night. So.
Share the burden.
So we, yeah, we're very hopeful. As you guys know, you've appropriated about two point nine million of your ARPA dollars to go towards storm drainage. So that will, Burke will be addressed with, with that, by the way, with that money. Broadmoor, not necessarily. And so we're going to go through and make some repairs. A couple of those are under design right now too, that we'll be working on. And Kim Brooke being a good example of that. We've got a design. But they're all, like I say, they're all very important. Some are a little scarier from public risk and some are just nuisance flooding. But both of them deserve lots of attention and money. So we appreciate you helping fund storm drains. And the upcoming bond will also have a component for storm drainage that's significant and will help.
If there's no other comment.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we ratify and approve the emergency contract between the city of Nakadoches and Dupla Chain Contractors for the construction of a new storm sewer system along Park Street and Mound Street in an amount not to exceed six hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda, receive a report and hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the November bond election. Mayor, council, Steve Bartlett again. And Council, Councilwoman Bellinger asked to put this on here. And so I kind of quickly stuck some things together. We, this was obviously right before we got the agenda out for you. So wanted to go through really quick where we are on schedule, just so you kind of have a feel. The two items in red, we have completed. You obviously adopted a resolution calling the bond election. And the, Rhonda has worked hard getting our final ballot language done in both English and Spanish and has gotten that delivered to our election official. These are all, by the way, things that have to happen by, by half-two dates. So these aren't casually done. Very quickly, good summary is we will send a notice of our election to officials by Friday. Rhonda and I were going through that today. By October sixteenth, we'll post sample ballots and a notice of election. And then, then again, actually a week after that, we'll post again, which will be the first early voting day in October and then on to the final election day in November. So that's, the time is moving quickly on this. So one of the questions that were asked in your request was kind of, what are we going to do? What are we going to post? Where, what kind of communications are we going to do? So I will tell you, this week, we are working on developing, and I use the word brochure, maybe that's appropriate or not, but a bond information brochure. It's going to have a scope of each of the propositions, which we've all had discussions on. But it'll be a facts-only item because as you've heard, that's our assignment, is facts-only. And, and I'd love to say that fixing all the storm drains will save the world from flooding, but we'll, we just cut the last part of that off. We're just going to fix all the storm drains. So we'll discuss tax rate implications so people understand what the impacts of each one of these are. And obviously, you make some assumptions like you saw on the back of the resolution. Those tax rate impacts are estimated, but we'll try to give them a feel for what these are worth in pennies on tax rates. We'll again remind and address over sixty-five and disabled tax relief from our recently passed stuff. It's surprising a lot of the discussions I get from folks that are not necessarily happy about a bond issue or from folks who actually probably won't be impacted. So I think this education's very important for us to let people know. And then lastly, contact information so they have a very, very quick and easy path to get questions answered by more than just one person. But we want them to have free communication with us. So, so we're hopefully putting this together, maybe a few pictures on it, be in a PowerPoint format, be in a PDF format. It'll be a document that we'll post on the webpage, our social media platforms, working with PIO to get this pushed out. Again, it's a facts-only document, but we'll have it and then copies that'll be available to use when you guys have a word meeting or take it to Rotary. So that's all being bundled now. So this week, we hope to get that kind of put together. And I want bond counsel, financial advisor, city attorney, everybody to review that. But that can happen pretty quickly. So I just want to let you know that's underway, which I think was one of your questions. So. And then I think you also wanted to address airport issues. And we can do that as you wish.
Yeah. So even on this, I'm, I'm really hoping that we get very, very specific, like which are the new facilities? Where are they going to be located? What are the, which drainage projects are we talking about? The roads? I mean, we're going to get that granular, correct, or not?
So the suggestion to us by both financial advisor and bond counsel is to not be very granular. And I will tell you, to leave some flexibility in that as we develop. So some of these things, we have really gotten in the weeds on. And we have, the drainage is a good example. We've designed twelve of them. And I can get in the weeds on that. Some of the things we're not in the weeds on. So we, we tend to leave it a little bit more generic. Now, Councilwoman, I can, we, we can do what you ask us to do, but we're going to try to leave a little latitude to add a street and delete a street, if that makes sense.
Sure. But maybe there's another spot. Like, I get very, very specific questions. So maybe we can have a packet that's more specific and then have on the website a little less specific. What, I'm just trying to answer questions that people raise to me. So, you know, and I could say this is the proposed, what you see could change because we may have a different, you, you see what I'm saying?
And, and we proposed all this to our CNAC committee. So it's all been very public information. It's been posted on the website. So I'm not saying it's been hidden at all. So I'm, I'm fine with having some detail there, but I very, very much want to qualify it.
Whatever you, whatever you, you know, come up with is if we can someplace have detail, even if it's qualified.
Okay.
You know, whatever we can get to answer questions. And to have our word meetings and all that to be, to be as specific as possible. That would, I think it would be very helpful because people want transparency.
And they know what they're voting on.
Now, I know you can't fit everything on a website, but.
Sure.
And I'm happy however it is.
Sure.
But you're right. The, one of the questions is, how do we ensure that, that we're drawing down dollars for the airport that are matched?
Right, right.
So I might.
And I wanted to have that discussion with you before I lose track of the other one. So we can certainly try to identify and, and if you'll give them a chance for Jerry and I to talk a little bit with bond counsel to make sure we kind of hit the sweet spot of information and not too much, I'd appreciate that so that we don't, again, we need some flexibility in doing some of these things.
It is, and, and again, let me, as long as, if there's more detail, if you give us, I know, I, you know, I was there at some of the meetings and I know I've seen it, but just in one spot, if we can have as much detail as possible.
Okay.
And know that, you know, we're, they, you've proposed sixteen drainage projects. These are the list of the day, they could change, whatever.
And I've got that.
The priority could change. I know you have it all, but just in one spot.
We printed it really small, really small print though.
Yeah, right, right, right.
No, no, and I totally understand. People want to know what they're voting for and paying taxes for. So again, we just want to make sure when we, because what's going to happen is we develop these designs. As we're speaking, the price of pipe went up.
Right.
And we may have to take one, one of these off.
Sure, sure.
And, or we may have a street that we, and we have, by the way, that we've gone ahead and paved ahead of the cycle that we proposed originally to CNAC. So these things are dynamic. So if you will have that understanding with me, I'll do the best I can to detail it. One of the things I don't think we're prepared to do is on the fire station locations, those of course haven't been established. We have some conceptual ideas, but we're not prepared to present those publicly. It actually kind of poisons our ability to negotiate. So we're, we're going to keep general discussion, general circle areas on, on that, if you can understand that.
Sure, sure. And I'm talking about like the bathrooms, which parks and, you know, what we're talking about.
Sure, sure. And that, and that really is all identified. Yeah. All right. And I'll, and I'll absolutely do that, trying to make it more flush with detail for you. So.
Steve, you might could even put a disclaimer, you know, like.
Oh, it'll, it'll be at the bottom.
Just.
Just because we said so.
Yeah. And, and, okay. Now, did, did you get your quick question answered about the?
He's going to move on to that.
About the, the airports with the other half of the question. So when the CNAC put this on the list, they had seven point three million for airports. And by the way, that's about the money of the first phase of airport development, which is terminal building, apron fueling, kind of the, the premier part. It isn't building new teahangers. That's the second phase. And so they said, but we want to make sure there's some match there. And that was literally the way it came down. So the match in our discussion and what was recorded wasn't specified. And I'm being facetious, but it wasn't, was it a dollar or was it ninety-nine percent, you know, match? So here's the reality of some of that is almost all airport work is funded through various federal and state money grants. That's the truth. FAA is funds the money, and Tech dot aviation using FAA money funds this stuff. Virtually all of those are match-oriented. So some of them are literally ten percent match. We're leveraging ninety percent. And some of them are fifty-fifty match. And there are a few things we do at the airport that do not have grants for it. A few things are maintenance-oriented that they don't have a grant program. Pam and I talked about swiping the mic before I came on.
Please don't get violent.
I guess it's tough. So, so unfortunately, during that discussion, it moved pretty quick. They didn't actually qualify or detail that. So I want you to know that. I think the intention all along is to have some matching monies to support that. If you want to give us direction on what that means, what that interpretation means, you can. I will tell you, right now, we already have two hundred thousand dollars in match money in the bank from private sources towards airport expansion. So there are match monies there today. We are applying and will be applying for future programs. We've missed the October window here. So one thing is a chicken and egg discussion is what I really wanted to have. So in order to apply for these things, which I think there's a, a lot of money coming down from the feds now on airport, and this is great news. But a lot of it is, show us you have the money when you make the application. And then you can make an application and get a fifty-fifty match or a ninety-ten match. So it's going to be a question of, do we have the money? Do we say we have the money to go chase the money? And so that's kind of the dilemma that we're in.
Okay. Well, you know, Larissa and I were in a meeting with Senator Nichols.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And he said the money was there. All we have, go ahead, Larissa.
So the money that he was talking about is exactly what Steve just mentioned. It has an October window. We, we're going to go ahead and apply, but we have to check the box that says we do not have a cash match in hand. So, so we. So, so we, we know we're eligible, I know if we submit that application this year, which we will, we're going to be put on the bottom of the pile. If a bond passed and we had that match in hand, we'll be able to check that and we get even more attention. Um, and then we certainly would let Senator Nichols know we're applying and, and ask for his assistance and.
You don't think he'd use all of his money up in October, do you?
No, no, they, they've, they, they budget on a biennium, and so they have at least two years, and there is so much coming in through the federal government. It is years and years and years worth of money, and they also segregate it based on the size of the airport.
And, and if we, if, if, if the bond passed with that particular airport thing, we wouldn't spend one dime until we had for sure something other than two hundred thousand dollars. Like, we would have a match from either the state or.
So, so mayor, that's really a council decision, so, if that makes sense? You, you determine how much of that seven point three million for airports we, we choose to draw down or sell at a particular time. You choose how, what instructions you want for us to get matching in order to do that, so honestly, it's case by case, y'all, um, if that makes sense.
So I think, um, if we had some kind of vote, some kind of ordinance, some kind of official, um, um, action that said we would not use those dollars, bond dollars, unless there was at least a fifty, fifty match. Then I believe your chances of that succeeding in the bond have, will be, will be
Greater.
Much greater, much greater, so.
Understand.
So my question, I guess, is a legal one, or is a, can we do something that shows that we're not going to use those dollars unless there's at least a fifty, fifty match? And I would use the other dollars, you know, to fix stuff that doesn't have a match, but, um, it, but, and that's really been.
Okay, what do you mean fifty, fifty, are you talking about like?
For every dollar, you bring another dollar, that's it.
Okay, so, in other words, the, the state would have to match the seven point three?
So, so, yeah, so if he, if we approved seven point three, there may be a federal match that's a ninety-ten, we could use that for that. There may be a, a twenty-five percent, seventy-five, twenty-five match, we could use it for that. There may be just a fifty, fifty, and we could use it for that. But we couldn't use it just to, um, go out and do something without a match. I, I just am trying to make sure we, that, that we can answer questions that people have.
Sure.
And concerns they have.
I think that's fair too, and, and it's transparent, because, because i- it, it was, it was presented to us as with matching funds. So whatever we have to do to, to, whether it's an ordinance or whatever it is, Jerry, we need to get that on the books pretty quick. I don't know how you do that, I mean, you can do policy, I assume, but, okay.
Great, I, I mean, I, I guess ordinance would give me a little hesitation, just because binding and then to require another ordinance to revoke it. More like a resolution maybe, that would be something that I would suggest, because you're, you're talking about an action that's taking place before the bond election.
Right.
Right.
Um, so that would just be my suggestion.
Okay.
Draft it and, you know, the resolution, it'd be crazy.
Yeah, so do you, do you want limits set in that of, of fifty percent match or better? Or do you want to case by case, because we make, here's a scenario, we may come to you and say, hey, there's a new program for terminal buildings. And so we'd like to pull down one point eight million dollars, uh, of that seven point three, go ahead and sell that and come to you and say, we've got a ninety-ten terminal project, well, that's fantastic. And I'm saying, we almost want to come to you case by case. If I had a match that was the other way around, where we had to pay ninety percent and ten percent, would you want us to bring it? So you need to set some criteria for us to know what to bring to you.
So I think you're, like, again, the, you want the chances of it being approved, uh, to be high. And, um, I think if you set a, a ground of fifty, fifty. Um, and then if there's some other project, that doesn't mean we can't fund it out of general funds or do something else, so. I think if we set a fifty, fifty minimum, then I think you'll have a lot, I think it'll, uh, it, you know, it could be approved if we don't.
And that's, that's y'all's direction, so.
And, and I was asking around, I wasn't just, I was saying, what would you, how would, what would you vote, you're concerned about the airport? What if it were seventy-five, what if it were fifty, fifty?
Sure.
What if it were twenty-five percent, and that was where I, we landed, so.
Okay, well, I just, I'll need some kind of formal direction from council, I guess, to, to write, what do we need, Jerry, at this point? Just to go forth and do that and come back with a, okay?
We'll, we'll craft a resolution, I guess, put that on a future agenda.
Okay.
I, I think councilmember Bellinger's right, a fifty, fifty lower bound on that.
Yeah.
That, I think that's, that's easy for people to say, they want a dollar-for-dollar match or better.
Okay.
And I, I think that's a, a good place to start.
And, and I did get asked this, I just want to be sure I'm clear, that is not written in the bond language on the proposition. It is, it is a policy, or in this case, a resolution, that has to be echoed in parallel with that election, does that make sense?
Yes.
The election's going to be for seven point three million dollars for airports.
Right.
Okay.
And we're basically saying, we're not going to use that.
Yep, we're not going to draw it unless, unless we have a fifty, fifty match.
Putting a condition on ourselves.
Mm-hmm, correct, and you're just pub, letting the public know that's the condition. Because when they vote on, and a lot of people don't understand, we don't go get the money. That's just the voter has approved that we can go sell that, up to that much in bonds. So, it can be five years and we can not use it.
That's not going to be in the, a bond issue that people are voting on, right? They're going to just, I mean, it's possible they could vote seven point three and you'd never get a matching fund?
We would, we would sell bonds if that's the case.
Right, because you still decide to sell the bond, so the voters have approved a tax increase up to whatever cents to support seven point, up to seven point three million in funds.
Right.
But we come to you for each piece of those funds, and you instruct us to basically go sell bonds for X million dollars out of that seven point three. Could be the whole amount.
But would have to have matching funds through the resolution.
But you wouldn't approve that, the resolution to sell bonds unless we brought to you a project that matched.
Right.
I mean, that's basically what you're saying.
Yes.
Because I could bring to you a project that didn't have a fifty, fifty match and you would not necessarily approve it.
Would say, we've already told you, we're not doing this.
Sit down, Steve, yeah.
So I have one other question, and that's the timing on this. I know the ballot sample isn't due until October sixteenth, but that leaves only one week until early voting. So I'm hoping, I know it's a, it's a hard thing, um, I'm hoping we can get some language, as much information as we can on this website, so people get familiar with it, so they're not surprised later on by ballot, like, whatever we can get.
So the ballot language has been finalized, in Spanish and English, and so it's available, public information.
Well, can, can it be on the web?
Absolutely, anything can be on the website.
As soon as we can post all of that.
The schedule that I showed you was our latest dates to publish them to the public. Uh, we can do it the day after tomorrow, but bond council's reviewed it, um, I think, right Rhonda, we're all good to go. And it's actually in Vicky's hands at the county, I think right now she has it, so.
The earlier that anything can get posted, the better, and, and the more comfortable everybody is.
Perfect, and by the way, this all mirrors what you had in the resolution, you know, the bond language, it mirrors that, I mean, we're, we're not changing anything, so. But no, it's absolutely, we can start to put that out. Probably, and we'll, we'll talk with Michael, uh, in IT to probably get us a whole separate little Rhonda area that makes this real easy to find. So you don't have to navigate through.
On the first page, yeah.
Yeah, see, correct. For the time, for now through November, it's a, it's a quick find, so we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions, eh? Thank you.
Okay, that concludes, uh, the open session of our, uh, regular meeting for September the fifth. Uh, we will now, uh, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section, uh, five five one point zero eight seven and, uh, five five one point zero seven one, uh, go into executive session. Thank you very much. And pursuant to Texas Government Code Section, five five one point zero eight seven and, uh, five five one point zero seven one, no action taken, this meeting is adjourned. God bless the great city of Nacogdoches.